Good evening and welcome to the November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Brookline School Committee. I'd like to start by moving the consent agenda. Do I have a second for that? Suzanne? Okay, thank you. Does anyone have questions or comments on the consent agenda before we vote? Okay, and seeing none from here and hearing none from our remote attendees, we'll move to the vote. Jesse?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. Great. And I vote yes as well. And I'd also like to draw attention to the fact that, as at the last meeting, we have the draft twenty-five, twenty-six calendar attached to the docket for this week's meeting. So in accordance with our policy on these things, this preserves the option of voting on the calendar at our next meeting. It's not yet clear sort of what our best way forward is in light of the active open meeting law complaint, but I hope we'll be able to get clear on that after talking with town council later this evening. All right, with that, we'll move to Kiran for the student report.
Yeah, thank you, guys. So November has been a busy month once again at the high school. To boot, quarter one has officially ended for students. We received report cards today that had been made available on Aspen. The quarter ended a week and a day ago, on November sixth. So there was that bit of languishing time between when the quarter ended and when report cards came out, this sort of in-between period, I know my friends and I like to call it. And that has officially ended today with report cards, so we are officially in quarter two. And more importantly perhaps, the varsity sports teams at VHS have been having just some incredible success, particularly the girls volleyball teams. The girls volleyball team are in the first D-one state championship game since nineteen seventy-eight for our school, which is obviously just remarkable. You know, I know many of the girls on the volleyball team, and I can just tell you how, you know, sort of excited everybody is to play. They play Saturday, November sixteenth, at six-thirty PM against Newton North. So it's a pretty exciting game. It's going to be the number one in the state versus the number two in the state. So I can tell you that everybody at the high school is, has already booked their ticket. Cross-country championships, the VHS cross-country championship. Yes.
Where is the game going to be held, the volleyball game?
So I know it's going to be held at a neutral location.
I see, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Meyer did email, so I can afford that to you guys.
It's Bill Ricka. It's being held in Bill Ricka.
Thanks.
Yeah, so in addition to the girls volleyball team, we have the boys' cross-country team. So the boys' cross-country team has been one of the most successful sports teams, certainly in my time at the high school. For the past two years, they've won the D-one state championships. And this Saturday again, they're looking to repeat for the third consecutive year. So that's at eleven forty-five this time around. So Saturday is going to be a very busy day for VHS varsity sports. And then additionally, we have our VHS girls soccer team, who are actually, they should be playing as we speak, at Parsons Field. They're in the round of eight, the quarterfinals. And so, you know, we wish them, obviously, all the success, all the best, and no doubt that they're going to get very far in this tournament. And then on November first, to begin the month, the Latinx Club hosted the annual Hispanic Heritage Assembly. So this is an annual thing that the Latinx and Allies Club puts on. You know, usually it contains speeches, it contains dancing, it contains, you know, music. Really, it's just a celebration of what it means to be Latinx in Brookline, what it means to be Latinx at VHS, and how, you know, we as a larger school community can celebrate that diversity, can celebrate the heritage that they bring. So this, this year's edition was particularly special. We heard from state rep Judith Garcia, who was the first Latina woman elected to the Massachusetts State Legislature. And she spoke during G block. This assembly was held during the last two blocks of the day, during G block and F block. And so in addition to that speech, we also saw speeches from club members. We saw a dance from the hip-hop and Latin music class at VHS, which is an elective offered by the Performing Arts Department. And really, the event, I got to go personally because I have an F-block Spanish class, but it was really just an amazing way, not only to celebrate, you know, Hispanic heritage at the high school, but really just to celebrate with the community and, you know, essentially be an ally. And so that is the November report for VHS. It's a busy, busy month, and we look forward to many more busy months as we kind of move towards at least the halfway point in this year, so.
All right, thanks, Kiran. If members have any questions for Kiran, just speak up if you're remote, because I can't see you. Okay, if not, then we can move to Dr. Gilery for the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to be here with you, even though I am home. I'm dealing with the sick little guy. So, and my wife is out of town, so that may put me on dad duty for tonight. I want to begin tonight's superintendent update with a staffing note change. We have, Dr. Susan Givens is going to be transitioning out of the role of deputy superintendent into another executive level role to support me and the superintendent's office. And we are able to do that through a resignation that we have within the, within the administration and finance office. So it's a one-to-one exchange in the role. And we will be going out to search pretty soon for a replacement, while she can't be replaced, but a replacement for Dr. Givens and the, for someone to lead the administration and finance office. I'm looking to finalize that posting to get that out either later tomorrow or first thing Monday. But we'd be looking at, we're looking at some modifications to the role, just slightly, maybe something in the title as well, because we want to be able to cast as wide a net as possible to get the best qualified candidate to come in and lead this workforce. So I wanted to, and we'll follow our normal hiring process or vetting process for that, which is, given that this, that role is a school committee statutory authority process, so we'll go through that process and bring, and I'll make a recommendation to the school committee for final hiring on that. So this is always a hard time when we have transitions, certainly mid-year, but we are moving forward. So we are in the process of notifying staff so that they are aware of this change, to make it as seamless as possible, and try to answer and support folks through this transition. Next up, we have an update from our health and nursing initiatives. The health office is collaborating with the town of Brookline to order more supplies for the COVID-nineteen tests. So we want to make sure that our, our team has what they need in terms of being able to test themselves. And like last year, nurses are no longer testing students or staff, but we want to make sure that our community has the resources they need if they're feeling sick or think they may have COVID. We are engaging in free CPR and AED training for our PSB staff. PSB has partnered with, partnered with the American Heart Association to host free CPR and the alternative fibular radius course for interested staff. This happened Wednesday, November fourth, at Lincoln School. And the course is designed to equip staff with basic CPR skills. And we're very pleased that Tricia LaHamm has been able to continuously seek out and provide training for our staff in various needs. So more to come as well, and I'm sure there'll be requests for additional trainings on this as well. Our clinical services, as part of their health programming, school staff are working to teach students about mental health. The Science of Suicide program teaches students about this difficult topic and encourages them to seek help. SOS has been used by thousands of schools for many, many years. Studies have shown that it effectively teaches students about depression and suicide while reducing the number of students' self-reported suicide attempts. The program is being delivered during health classes, which are scheduled for late November or December. The Fall Universal Screening for Students in Grades Three Through Twelve ended November eighth. The screening measures school belonging, supportive relationships, and emotional regulation skills, pleasant feelings and unpleasant feelings. And you all may remember the deep work that, that OSS did. And Matt, Dr. DeBois, shared out these results over the course of last year, and we're starting to see our data trend up, which is very powerful. For grades, for students in grades six through twelve, the survey includes the PHQ4, which is a brief screening tool for anxiety and depression. School teams use this information to identify students who made it, who may need additional support. Over the next two weeks, the data will be analyzed at the building and district level to identify trends, strengths, and areas of need for the PSB mental health programming. Open house to view potential literacy materials. Dr. Fortuna joined me this morning with the PTO leaders, and she did a very nice job of walking through where we are with the literacy materials. And so this again is our community-wide blurb to share that the Office of Teaching and Learning is hosting a community open house for PSB families to learn about three new programs that have been identified for the K through five literacy instruction. The open house will take place Monday, November twenty-fifth, from five to six here at Town Hall, following the curriculum subcommittee meeting. And for more information, feel free to reach out to Dr. Jody Fortuna. The three finalists are ARC Core, EL Education, and Fish Tank. Promoting team building, we want to shout out Sarah Latner-Apalo, the director of Winthrop House for grades six through twelve. She coordinated a special afternoon of team building at Hale Reservation in Westwood on November fifth. Staff drove out to strengthen the ties across different programs that work together. The staff challenged each other, learned from each other, and walked away feeling rejuvenated for the work they do, thinking about how they can bring those experiences to Winthrop House. As a result of new connections, staff is now planning staff exchanges across the middle and high school programs to build stronger transitions for students between eighth and ninth grade and help students of all ages adapt with less familiar staff in preparation for post-secondary opportunities. So thank you to Sarah, as well as the Winthrop House team. And with that, that concludes the superintendent's update for tonight.
All right, thank you, Dr. Gilery. Any questions or comments from members? Speak up if you're remote.
My, my only question was, the curriculum meeting is from four to five-thirty, and this starts at five. Is, is, are we gonna miss half an hour of, if you want to go to the literacy review?
No, so it's actually, it's folding into the other. So we start at four. We have two items on the agenda. One, the Sustainability Task Force, and the other is going to be the literacy curriculum. So four to five, we'll overview of the curriculum, and then at five, the public will join us. And so
Oh, perfect.
we kind of ease into that.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no more questions.
Andy, I have a, I don't have a question, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Mariah.
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge Susan Givens' contributions in her current role. Really, it's been tremendous, the work that she has put in in that role. And while I am sad she'll be stepping out of that role, I am grateful that she will be remaining with the district to provide continuity, and I'm excited to see what she can do in, in this new advisory, strategic advisory role. So my thanks to Susan.
I second it.
Same.
Yep, mine as well, for the huge amount of necessary work that you've initiated and that I hope you'll be able to continue contributing to. All right, so with this, we move to public comments. So tonight, we have twenty-five speakers signed up for public comment. Everybody will have three minutes, so this means that the first five speakers will be going now, and then the remaining speakers will go, starting around eight-twenty-five. So I think we can forego, unless there's something very urgent, our subcommittee and liaison reports, and give some of that time to, to public comment. Okay, so a couple of reminders before we start. So our practice is that we listen carefully to every speaker, but we don't react or respond in the moment. And secondly, please keep in mind that we're all responsible for keeping our students safe. So speakers are requested not to name individual students or staff, or to speak about them in such a way that they can be identified individually. All right? So with that, let's go to our first speaker, Maya Abramson. Ms. Abramson, floor is yours for three minutes.
Hi, good evening, committee members and audience in the room and in home. My son is a ninth grader at the high school and just finished Lincoln High School, Middle School. I'm personally appalled about the opportunity, the possibility that a high school, high school student will be speaking during a day of, I'm looking up the name of this day that the high school is having, diversity, equity, and apparently going to be spewing hate speech during this day that's supposed to be highlighting diversity, inclusion, uniqueness of every nation around the world, and the school and the people in charge of education in the city or in the town are allowing this to happen. I'm personally mortified, mortified, that I'm putting my son in the hands of people that would allow a student to spew hate against anyone in our community. We're living in Massachusetts, the state with the most intelligent people in, if not the country, maybe the world. And to think that I'm putting my son and my, my friends are putting their children in the hands of people who would even think about doing such a thing is just unfathomable to me. You should understand that no one should be allowed to spew hate, especially not in high school. This is a captive audience, and you're subjecting them to hear hate against another population in a school that I'm funding, and we're all funding with our tax, hard, hard-earned tax money. So I'm calling upon anyone in charge of this day to in no way allow hate speech to be directed against any population. Do you not see the connection between the encampments on MIT campus, which I was there, holding my Israeli flag, an American flag, and I, on the campuses of Harvard and other universities? And these are people who are, who are, who are violent in their, in their, in their words and their actions. And just this, a week ago, people were haunted down to be killed or taken hostage in the streets of Amsterdam. Is that what you want in our streets of Brookline? Is that what you want Brooklyn to be known as for? We have stickers with these, the Jewish star with the swastika on it. I'd like to actually share, I don't know if I'm able to share a video.
Ms. Abramson, please wrap it up. You've exceeded three minutes already.
Okay, thank you. Please do not allow this to happen. We are all mortified from this idea even.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa Schatz.
Okay, you hear me? Okay?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to share the views of three moral giants of our time that could help give context for the current strife around the world with regard to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict and point a way for Brookline schools to handle this conflict in school events and in the curriculum. First, there's Middle East expert and religious Muslim, Dr. Ed Hussein. He's a professor at Georgetown University with senior advisor to Prime Minister Tony Blair, and through his leadership in various think tanks helped promote peace in the Middle East. On a recent trigonometry podcast, when asked by co-host Frances Foster, why does this particular conflict enrage people like Frances's Muslim friend and not other Middle Eastern conflicts? Dr. Hussein states, Frances, your friend doesn't seem to be angry at Yemen, he doesn't seem to be angry about Syria, he doesn't seem to be angry about Sudan and Egypt, might it be that he has a problem with Jew hatred? Because we didn't see outcry when millions of Muslims and Syrian Arabs were being insulted and abused. We don't see weekly protests pertaining to Yemen or Sudan or Egypt. Now, I'd like to shift to the late Rabbi Jonathan Sacks, who was the chief rabbi of the British Commonwealth, and he describes antisemitism in this way. Antisemitism has been hard to define because it expresses itself in such contradictory ways. Before the Holocaust, Jews were hated because they were poor, because they were rich, because they were communists, and because they were capitalists, because they kept to themselves, and because they infiltrated everywhere, because they clung to ancient religious beliefs, and because they were rootless cosmopolitans who believed nothing. So in the Middle Ages, Jews were persecuted because of their religion. In the nineteenth and twentieth centuries, they were reviled because of the race. Today, Jews are attacked because of the existence of their nation-state, Israel. Denying Israel's right to exist is the new antisemitism. Each time, as the persecution descended into barbarity, the persecutors reached for the highest form of justification available. In the Middle Ages, it was religion. In post-enlightenment Europe, it was science. Today, it is human rights. Whenever you hear human rights invoked to deny Israel's right to exist, you are hearing the new antisemitism. And now I'd like to switch to what Robert Bernstein said. He is the founder of Human Rights Watch, and he disavowed his organization for its antisemitism. And here's what he wrote. "Israel with a population of seven-point-four million is home to at least eighty human rights organizations, a vibrant free press, a democratically-elected government, a judiciary that frequently rules against the government, a politically-active academia, multiple political parties, and judging by the amount of news coverage, probably more journalists per capita than any other country in the world, many of whom are there expressly to cover the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. Meanwhile, the Arab and Iranian regimes rule over three-hundred-and-fifty-million people and most remain brutal, closed, and autocratic, permitting little or no internal dissent. The plight of their citizens, who would most benefit from the kind of attention a large and well-financed international human rights organization can provide, is being ignored as Human Rights Watch's Middle East Division prepares report after report after report on Israel." So what I'd like to emphasize here is that antisemitism is insidious, and our school leaders need to be cognizant that when planning events, such as this upcoming event and other topics in the curriculum, when, where students and teachers can feel emboldened by the worldwide protests against Israel, I, I, they need to understand before they go and opine on the conflict on Israel and Gaza. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Schatz. And next up, we have Ariel Grusman.
Hello, I will make it short, and I'll try to make it a little bit to the point. I'm here to talk about the Day of Racial Reform and Solidarity that is going to happen in Brooklyn High, and especially about the events that happened last year. And I'm sure the school committee know about what happened last year. And we were promised by the school administration that things are going to change and going to be monitored more closely, so these things won't happen again. So this day is approaching, and we're finding out that, and again, I'm trying to be very careful here, and one of the speakers, one of the kids, participated in a hate rally. Now, we know they are kids, and, you know, sometimes they talk things in their heart, and they don't fully grasp what they're saying. But still, if it was someone, let's assume the person that was supposed to speak was in a white supremacy rally, or a KKK rally, or some other hate group, will this, you think you would allow it? Would you think you would find a teacher that would sponsor this kind of individual? That's the equivalent that you have to ask yourself. So if the answer is no, you have to find a way to solve this, this issue. So I don't know what, I understand the purpose of the day, but if it's coming to the, to a point that it's creating this kind of division in the community, ask yourself, what's the purpose of it? The world is changing, the world changed. Things that was true a year ago, two years ago, are not true today. You have to change your perspective and look at things more critically. You see what happened in the elections, you see what happened around the world. Things are not the same, so you cannot now judge the things, those things that are borderline political, right? These days borderline political. We can argue that. We take that as granted, as it's something that needs to be done, as, 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 as something to educate the kids, but it's, some people say this is some sort of indoctrination. So we have to take a step back and evaluate this day, what it, what it brings back to the community based on the things we see. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Grusman. Next up, we have Joseph Katz.
That's all right, thanks. So my name's Joe Katz, I'm a town meeting member, precinct nine. I'm a parent to two students at FRR, heading to the high school next year, the older one. And I've been in Brookline for sixteen years now. I love the community. I mean, that's really why I've stayed in Brookline, is the community that I've, you know, my family's fell in love with. Quick, relevant background on me, so I grew up in an interfaith family. My mom's Roman Catholic, my dad was Jewish. I was raised in Reform Judaism, and my sisters were raised Catholic, so confusing childhood for me. But I grew up in a little suburb outside of New York City, and I was unfortunately one of the kids that was probably one of ten who got bullied just for the sake of having bar mitzvah and being Jewish. So I know what it means to go through that as an adolescent and a teenager, you know, and it continued all the way up through being a senior. So it wasn't, it wasn't a spot in time where that was something I dealt with. To get to the point, in the late nineteen nineties, you know, the idea of a Day of Racial Reform and Solidarity was a distant thought of a high school administration, if ever a thought at all back then, unfortunately, right? So we didn't have the opportunities that are happening today. But here and now, in Brookline, this event makes sense, right? This is, this is a place where we value the understanding that everyone should be able to go to school and attend school with a feeling of safety, regardless of their identity. So when we offer an opportunity to strengthen those beliefs and values through a vehicle like the Day of Racial Reform and Solidarity, we shouldn't contradict that sentiment by polluting the day with antisemitic and other hate speech, sometimes disguised as some version of revolutionary expression or otherwise. Positive cultural affirmations build a diverse community, while grievances, like what we saw last year, are creating and furthering polarization in our community. So, school committee and administration, any correlation of this day, their speeches and activities that further bigotry or bullying in our community need to be accounted for. So I call on the school committee to require the head of school and Dr. Gilery to review any of these speeches before they're released to the public and presented on this day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. And our last speaker in this block is Elliot Wayne.
Thank you. So my son is a sophomore, and as one of the other speakers said, went through a little bit of a difficulty last year. He called me afterwards, being very upset. And we were promised a different school committee, we were promised changes. And 13 months later, it doesn't seem like much has changed in some ways, although there's a lot of new faces, which is hopeful for some of us. So I too rise about this day of whatever it's called. I don't even understand what it's called. I don't even understand why we're having it. But that really is the problem here. The problem is, as I see it, is the lack of moral clarity. That's been, from the school committee, through Dr. Guillory, and down to Anthony Meyer, about October 7th, we went, and I don't want to rehash because I don't have much time, all that happened last year, okay? But now, on October 6th or whatever, when Anthony Meyer sends out his, for the week, how we didn't mark it in any way. Now, I know there's different views about different things, and I'm not talking politics. But our job is to call out evil when we see it. That's why we teach the Holocaust, it's evil. It's a unique evil in time. October 7th was evil. It was rape. It was murder. It was kidnapping. What happened after October 7th is a whole different conversation. But the school should have taken the approach that this is a learning opportunity, a teachable moment, as they say. But again, it gave a feckless way out, and I have it here. "I am mindful that tomorrow marks the 10-7 milestone that will impact different members of our community in different ways." I don't really understand what that means, in different ways. Who's going to be impacted a different way? But let's go on. Let's remain conscious that tomorrow will land differently across our school community. Again, does that mean some people didn't find October 7th in a certain way? And if so, we have a different problem in town. So be mindful that speech and actions can upset others. So I find this feckless. I really don't have any words to express the tone deafness. Look, I understand Israel and Gaza, it's politics. It's complicated. It's emotional for everyone. But as I said, this isn't politics, October 7th. There's no moral ambiguity of what happened on that day. And our educators, starting at the top, what happened last year, and to allow this to come to this day all over again, with a student who said whatever he believes. And that's his right to say whatever he believes, but doesn't have the right to get up in front of my kid at school in a forced event to spew his feelings, okay? And as I know, my son is staying home that day. He's going to be sick. And I would advise all the other kids to walk out, like I've seen the Brookline kids do in other times and other places for other, for other causes. So that's what I would encourage the young people to do, because this event shouldn't go on.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wayne. So that concludes this first segment of public comment. We'll pick it up again in place of our subcommittee and liaison reports, which are scheduled to start around 8:25. All right, so we move now to our presentations and discussions of current issues. First up, we have the Office of Student Services presenting our attendance report. Lisa and Matt Dubois.
Very happy. I'm gonna clear my screen.
Great. Well, tonight, Dr. Dubois is going to be providing a brief targeted report on attendance trends within the public schools of Brookline. And at Dr. Guillory's suggestion, we thought that these positive data trends might be complementary to the enrollment report that will follow. And before I turn it over to Dr. Dubois, I just want to take this opportunity to thank him for his extraordinary leadership in coordinating clinical services for our PSB students and promoting social, emotional learning across our schools. It's an honor and a privilege to work with Dr. Dubois, and I'm just delighted to turn this over to him. Thanks, Matt.
Of course. Well, thank you, Lisa. Good evening, everyone. And so as Lisa offered, we wanted to give an update about attendance, we're about a quarter of the way through the school year. So we thought the timing of this felt right. For folks who remember back in March, we gave an update, and this is going to feel pretty, pretty similar to this. And over the past couple of weeks, I found myself in a position with a lot of our clinical teams, with a lot of our administrators, talking about attendance. And for me, whenever we are talking about attendance, I want to anchor it in this really big idea about why it is so important. We believe deeply in the programming that we're building out for our kids. We know that school offers this very unique, sort of irreplaceable experiences that really impact kids academic, their social, their emotional, their cognitive development. So being available, being at school every single day is incredibly, incredibly important. And unfortunately, with the pandemic, we saw the impact of what not attending school regularly does to children. And so I just want to anchor in that really big idea about why attendance is such a driving force for so much of the work that we're doing. And so here, you see this listed that we want to make sure that every single student in our district is able to show up to school on time, remain in school, remain engaged, and participate in the programming that we're building out. For us, on the school side, accurately recording attendance every single day for every single student, we have legal requirements, obviously, to do that. But it actually carries really meaningful implications for both me and also for kids. For administrators, we use attendance every single day. And we're using attendance to really evaluate much of the programming that we're offering students. And for me and my lens, when I'm looking at our mental health programming, attendance is this really important secondary indicator that we can use to evaluate how we're supporting things like belonging, mental health. And so it's data that we're interacting with just about every single day. For individual students, we're also oftentimes using attendance to monitor how they're responding to interventions. Oftentimes, attendance is a lever that we're using to provide students additional supports at school, as well as helping them access community-based supports. What's also important for us to be thinking about with attendance, and this is going to be sort of thematic. When you look at the literature and sort of best practices with attendance, it's really important that you're monitoring it at all times. We want to catch, we want to catch issues with attendance as early as possible. For anybody who has worked in schools or, you know, worked with kids who struggle with attendance, it can move pretty quickly. And so with the very first signs of an issue, we want to make sure that we're supporting kids and catching them as early as possible. And so as I just mentioned, accurately recording attendance is really, really important. And one thing that our school teams are wanting is additional granularity, where we can be really specific in recording why a student might have been absent. Two categories that we've added this year are school refusal and family emergency. Those are two pretty common reasons why students are missing school. For you to know, this school refusal category, we only use that category when somebody from the clinical team is working closely with that student and with the family, so we're accurately recording what that is. Now, this granularity is important because obviously, you know, if we can sort of think back last week, we'll be able to identify why a student might have been absent. But when we're looking back in previous school years, it's really important when we're looking at trends to help explain why it is that a student was absent. This sort of gave an example of what we're thinking this might help us with. If a high school student has started to struggle with attendance, we can then go back and say, hey, was school refusal something that was difficult back in fourth grade or in middle school? And so we're hopeful that this granularity is really going to help us understand why it is that a student might be struggling with attendance. As I mentioned, catching attendance issues as early as possible, really, really important. Another big idea within the attendance research is that we want to communicate with kids and families really often about why attendance is so important. And so I have some snippets here from a communication that goes out to all families in August. We also provide this information upon enrollment to families. And this communication is really meant to be this first time, not the only time, the sort of the first time in a school year where we're talking about why attendance is so important. What you'll also see here is we describe things that we can excuse, things that we can't excuse. We offer some tips and tricks to help support attendance. Not seen here, but we do describe that if attendance becomes a challenge, we're really encouraging families to reach out as early as possible so we can begin that collaboration. Another communication that we will typically send out to families is when a student has missed their fifth day of school for unexcused reasons. There's a legal requirement that we have, that all schools have, that you need to notify a family once a student has their fifth unexcused absence. There's a lot of ways that you can do that. Sometimes they're doing it in emails. Sometimes they're doing that with a phone call. But this is a letter that a lot of families will receive. We've refined this letter quite a bit over the years. And as you see, what we're really trying to achieve in this letter is bringing awareness that attendance has been a challenge so far and really taking the supportive stance, where we're building a really close relationship with the family and sort of talking about strategies that might be supportive for them. When attendance, it's really common that when attendance is an issue, that we're talking to families every single day. And so again, neither of these are meant to be the only forms of communications. They're sort of the first line of communications that we're having to help support attendance. All right, so I'm going to move into some data now. Folks who saw the presentation last March, this slide is going to look pretty familiar. So what I've done here is I'm posting our chronic absenteeism rates going back to 2016 and 2017. As you might know, chronic absenteeism is measured as missing 10% or more of school days in which you're enrolled. So for most students who are enrolled for an entire school day, 180 school days, this would represent missing 18 or more school days. What, and I also want to know that these are combined excused and unexcused. I offered this back in March, but I want to surface it again here. There is sometimes this narrative around attendance that we were feeling really good about attendance, and then the pandemic hit, and then attendance sort of fell apart. And it's absolutely true, the pandemic worsened attendance. But I also want to name that we saw an increasing trend of chronic absenteeism leading into the pandemic. This is also coinciding with increases in mental health symptoms among youth, and those things are absolutely related. So I just want to sort of frame that as a larger context. And moving into the pandemic, we were concerned with attendance, and obviously, we continue to be. And so when you look at these, for most school districts, definitely in the Commonwealth throughout the country, school year '21, '22 was sort of the height of chronic absenteeism. So much so that in Massachusetts, Desi actually created a new statistic to capture chronic absenteeism, and this is this 20% number here. In the corner, these goals are the goals that are specifically referenced within our strategic plan. So they're a year-by-year metrics that we're looking to achieve. And so going back to this main part of the slide, you see last year, we had this really nice improvement in our attendance. We're removed from 14.5% down to 11.5%. And so we're getting close to where our goal was for '26, '27. And I'm really hopeful, I'm really optimistic that if I'm presenting these data deeper into the school year, that we're going to come close to surpassing this. What I want to frame, and I know this has come up with other goals in the strategic plan, if we hit this goal early, great, and the work is going to continue, right? So it's not as if we're going to wash our hands, we hit our goal and move on. Attendance is that important. That's the thing that we're always going to pursue, that we're always going to work on. And so I just want to frame that. When I presented in March, I pulled out, I sort of offered what this looks like with kindergarten students, without kindergarten students. The current number right now is at 8.8%. When I excluded kindergarten students, it was 8.7%. So to keep the slide less cluttered, I just include everybody here. But right now, I guess on Tuesday, actually, our chronic absenteeism rate was at 8.8% for all students, K through 12, with this 20% number being at 2%. If you're sort of interested in a grade-by-grade breakdown that's presented here, and what I really want to call out is this beautiful strength we're seeing within the high school. The high school has always been really interested in attendance. I've been really impressed with the work that they've done, particularly in the last two years to help support attendance. If you walk into that ninth grade building, you will see deans and counselors all over that place, talking to kids, building engagement, building relationships. And this was really a north star for them, is trying to make sure the kids were in the building and in class. And so the strongest attendance that we saw last year was in ninth grade. Now, we look at the 10th graders, we're seeing some pretty strong maintenance of that growth for this grade, and then continuing to see ninth grade being pretty strong. So I just want to call off the really strong work that's happening at the high school. Just to sort of give you sort of a feel for how the school year tends to play out. So this, this line here, the solid line, looks at our chronic absenteeism for September, October, and November. This dotted line is what we observed last year. So what we know is around school vacation weeks, we tend to see more absences. We're moving into cold and flu season, we tend to see more absences. So I just want to frame that we're moving into a part of the school year where we typically see our most absences. Then when we come out of April break, we typically see a decline pretty rapidly. So I just want to sort of frame that as sort of a scope and sequence of the year, if you will. Last thing that within this I thought was sort of interesting, last year, about half of our absences were excused, about half were unexcused. Right now, about only a third of absences are unexcused right now. All right, in March, when I, when I go back here, when you look at these metrics, these metrics apply to all student groups. So it's not just that 30,000-foot view, right? So this would also apply, for example, students with disabilities, right? We want to make sure that we're hitting these stats for all students. And so these are sort of two sort of quick data points here where we have seen discrepancies in the past with attendance. Me and my role, kids with disabilities is something that I look at quite a bit within our attendance and within our engagement. For a little bit of context, this 16% number is pretty close to what we saw with students with IEPs prior to the pandemic. I think the number was around 14%. At its most challenging, I think we were around like 26% of students with IEPs were chronically absent. Last year, this number was just under 20%. So again, really nice growth in this area, but of course, we still have more work to do. So in terms of what we're doing within schools, some folks that may know, we contracted a company called Open Architects, and they build out data dashboards for us. And this has been really helpful for us, particularly with attendance. And so Open Architects actually plugs in directly with Aspen. So all of our school leaders, a lot of central office leaders, we can see attendance almost live. It updates every single night. And so we're able to, in really powerful ways, understand which students are able to come to school regularly and which students are not. And that helps us really target our support. We are continuing to sort of think about how we can utilize home visits to support attendance. Throughout last year, we were building out a home visit protocol, and we're continuing to work on this. And we've had some really nice success of having home visits generate attendance. And so that's something that we're going to continue to work on. So I know that was relatively brief, but that's sort of a snapshot of what we've got going on right now.
All right, thank you very much, Matt. I see a hand from Stephen, so you can kick off our questions and comments, Stephen.
Thanks, Andy. And thanks, Matt, for that presentation. Just, I have a question that is something that I'm remembering from last year's conversation around attendance. I may be misremembering, but your slide about communication got me thinking. I feel like we discussed after your presentation last year how we communicate with families where there's chronic absenteeism, and there was some concern that the messaging to those families may be overly brusque or may border on the punitive sounding. And there was, maybe people on the school community can correct.
Stephen, you remember, yeah? And so we made some tweaks.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that. If there was, if there were changes in how we are communicating to families where there is chronic absenteeism in the family.
Yeah, so I think, I think that people rightfully had a reaction to. So in that letter that you may have seen last year, we did reference that there are occasions in which we would have to, for example, work with the Department of Children and Family. And so in the current letter with our initial outreach, there's no reference to that. And so it's a purely supportive stance, purely sort of thinking about how we build that, that relationship.
Thanks, that's great.
Okay, I have a question. Go ahead, Suzanne. Okay. So Matt, you mentioned the outstanding work that's happening at the high school and the very low chronic absentee rate for ninth and 10th grades in particular. Looking just above that on the chart, you see that over the three years of middle school, there's a really steep rise, right? From 7.6% in sixth grade to 9.7 in seventh grade, to 12.2 in eighth grade. So do you have any ideas on what's happening during middle school for that to be occurring? Besides, yeah, besides just middle school.
It's a rough time. No, you know, I think, you know, what's nice for, I haven't noticed that to be a trend consistently over the past couple of school years. So it could just be sort of a random fluke or sort of random variance data. But yeah, something that I think it's worthwhile to keep an eye on.
Okay, so that's not something that you saw.
Not that I've observed historically now. You know, I mean, there have been, and again, not enough that I think would move the data. I mean, there are sometimes. I mean, there are sometimes, you know, sort of like instead of senioritis, it's sort of eighth gradeitis. Sometimes that can sort of impact things, but not to a degree where I can sort of put my finger on it and think that's the reason why. But again, something I think we'll continue to monitor.
Okay, thank you. I think Suzanne.
Yeah, Matt, I was just going to say it's the same trend in nine through 12. That's sort of mirroring what Andy had pointed out in six through eight. So the senioritis theme seems to answer that one, but it's almost a doubling from six to eight and a doubling from nine to 12. So that's a lot of absences, though.
Yeah, and I think, you know, what's sort of nice about us being able to have this level of granularity is so I think once trends emerge, then we can really target our support, right? So if we have concerns that, you know, once kids are hitting 12th grade or in eighth grade, there's some disengagement, then we can really target the supports there. You know, for example, in eighth grade, we're really building towards high school and there's no, there's no switch that gets flipped, right? There's so many student skills that you're continuing to build out throughout eighth grade. And so that's what's sort of nice about the platform that we use, that we can get that granularity to then really target our support.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Matt. So I often think of absenteeism in the younger grades as kind of a family concern. Because, you know, six-year-olds aren't, I mean, for the most part, aren't saying, no, I'm not going, and they can't get there on their own. So I kind of think of that as a family approach. And then as they get, I don't know at what age they start to shift, but at some point, they, they kind of become in charge of their, of their own attendance and how they get themselves to school and how they engage. And so my question is a little bit is, do we have slightly different approaches for children who are younger than we might have for children or students who are older?
What a beautiful question, definitely. And I would, I would offer that almost every time we're concerned about attendance, we are engaging the entire family. Obviously, that's going to look a little bit different. You know, just as an example, you know, for a five, six, and seven-year-old, we'll coach a parent up that if your child is crying, it's okay. We'll come out to the car, we'll receive your child, we're going to take really good care of them. So that might look a little bit different. Obviously, for a, for a high school family, we're going to be doing some coaching around morning routines and making sure that bedtime is not at 2:00 in the morning, right? So that approach looks a little bit different. But I would say almost always, we are trying to engage the whole family.
And is it our counselors who are doing a lot of that work? Who's doing that work?
Yes, or clinical teams oftentimes are frontline. Again, it, it's oftentimes interfacing with mental health challenges as well. I'd say that's one of the really common reasons why kids struggle to come to school. Vice principals, principals, deans, counselors, psychologists. Again, you know, as problems become more intense, not just attendance problems, but in general, as problems become more intense, the team widens. And so in our cases for kids who are really, really struggling, it's not uncommon that it really is a collaboration between the family, counselor, administrator, outside providers, the student, of course, we're all sort of coming together and taking a team approach on it.
And would that team come together as a child study team? I mean, could you?
Yeah.
Would that happen?
I'd say it's not uncommon for students who are being presented to our child study teams to have attendance challenges. Again, a big idea here is that we want to intervene as early as possible. So for example, when we, you know, recommend a kiddo for child study teams, sometimes, you know, it can take about two or three weeks for a student to be seen. So oftentimes, really at the first sign that we're concerned with a student, we want to apply intervention. We don't want to just wait for that meeting that's two weeks out. So sort of a both and.
Yeah, thank you.
Jesse.
Yeah, Matt, question, how does this 8.8% chronic absenteeism or attendance levels in general fall within the catchment area that you normally compare against district to district? I mean, I don't, I'm not even going to throw out city names, but maybe you can provide some context.
Yeah, so I'd say relative to other districts, we're usually ahead in terms of our chronic absenteeism numbers, so that they're looking a little bit better. You know, for me, I think that that's helpful to contextualize the issue. It's also helpful, you know, when we're talking to our neighbors to sort of think about what's working and what's not working. And I know you're not, not saying that, but for me, I always sort of, you know, caution that, you know, our goal is just not to be, oh, look, we happen to be better than that neighboring district, right? We owe our kids much more than that. And so it's helpful to know, right, that, you know, that, that number is, is, you know, a little bit better than neighboring districts. But, you know, that will impact the goals that we have.
All right, are there any other questions or comments for, for Matt? All right, I don't see any, so thank you very much, Matt, for this beautiful, clear presentation as always, and for the work that, that you're doing with our families.
I appreciate it.
Yep, Carolyn's agreeing, yep, in her mind, thanks. Yeah, okay, so our next presentation, yep.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Segueing. And forgive me if this was discussed before I came in, I was late. Which of us are here and not here? I mean, I see who's here, but we have an unusually high number of not in the room.
Yes, present in the room are Betsy, Karen, Carolyn, Suzanne, Jesse, and myself. Joining us remotely are Val, Steven, and Mariah. Yep, so Sarah and Helen are not with us. All right, so this brings us to our enrollment report from, I believe, Susan and perhaps Megan?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, hi, Megan.
There she is, all right, good, tag team. Yeah, so tonight, we are going to present you with our official October 1 enrollment data. And of course, annually, every school district has to provide the Department of Education with enrollments as of October 1. So it goes through this process and then ultimately it goes from unofficial when everything has been reconciled out. And we're happy to report that our October 1 enrollments are official now. So one of the things that Megan did earlier today was change our slide deck to reflect that these are actually our official as opposed to unofficial October 1 numbers. But this is a point in time. And if we were going to give you the enrollments today, it would look different than it did on October 1. So shifts in enrollment throughout the year are normal for every school district. But one of the things that I noticed that was really quite surprising to me is the magnitude of change that you have here in Brookline. And it presents itself in different ways as we develop the budget and provide support and programming to students. So what we wanted to do is to start off with sharing some information with you about what we refer to here in Brookline as churn. So those are students that migrate out and then my others that migrate in. It is really significant here. And so the period that we're going to take a look at is from June until this October 1 report. Because as in all school districts, that's when you're going to have your greatest churn rate. We're also going to look at, you know, what populations are transitioning in, you know, where, where, where do they come from? Because that is also an interesting bit of information that we use when we start to think about how do we need to staff to support the students that are coming in and those that are going out, not just our students, but our staff as well. So Megan's going to go through those slides and then she's going to give you kind of the high level look at our October 1 enrollments over time. And then she's going to share our K8 average class size information. And, and then I'm going to look at, you know, how do we do on our projections, you know? And then we'll look at what our projections are for next year and why we're changing our methodology a little bit. And that is, we'll conclude our presentation to you tonight. So without further ado, I will turn the mic over to Megan to review with you some, some patterns and trends related to our churn.
Great, thank you, Susan, for that introduction. And it's nice to speak to everybody this evening. I'm Megan Ganey, I'm the manager for enrollment here in Brookline, for those of you who I've not had the opportunity to present to previously. So this first slide, as Susan so kindly teed up for us, is looking at our summer churn. And you'll see, I just orient you to the information that you're looking at. There are three successive school years presented here. The current school year is to your leftmost. The last school year, 23, 24, is in the middle, and the prior school year is to the right. And each of these areas, we're going to see sort of how many students left at the closure of a school year in that summer window between the end of one school year and the beginning of the next. And then the next column is students who have entered newly or returned, in some cases, back into Brookline Public Schools and what sort of that volume looks like and how it's distributed. And then the third column will sort of show the replacement cost or benefit, if you will, to the class sizes during that window. And as Susan mentioned, we have selected annually to present this particular time period, this end of school year to the beginning of the, you know, the end of the October 1 reporting period. Because it is the period that is the most highly busy in terms of students leaving and new students coming. We do see churn throughout the year. It will just simmer down just a little bit more during the school year. But this is our most volatile period, so it is a nice window into seeing what happens each year. And the important story here is that generally speaking, you'll find that overall our enrollment numbers may not change that much. But in looking at this information, this is representing individual student, human people and families and their experiences that we're working with. So the individual students making up our classrooms change quite a lot from year to year. And many families are making big transitions and saying goodbye to their public schools of Brookline families and schools. And then many also are being welcomed in and our staff and our community are working really hard to get them on board and integrated and welcomed as well. So that's the overarching story that is associated with our enrollment numbers. October 1 numbers are numbers and they, they tell us lots of helpful information. But I always like to sort of key in on the fact that these are individual human students that we're working with and may all have their own stories and work that comes with them. So the overarching story this year is that our net gain and loss overall across the district was about 46 students, which aligns much more closely with 2022, 23, which was 58 student gain and loss. Last school year, 2023, 24, you'll see there's a big gain, 222 students, which we are going to identify as an outlier. If you're looking at the withdrawals, you can see that that is significantly lower than our usual 400-something, whereas the new student intake was only marginally higher. And though we can't, like, certainly state that this is the case, I do believe that that aberration there is because of that it was part of our COVID recovery period, wherein families who had not come to Brookline and then began sort of their experience here, which we often see, you know, families who come for two or three years for, you know, various academic or, or work obligations. They may not stay forever, but we have many families who do come for, you know, short, medium-term stays. They began those in the 2022, 23 school year and just didn't leave. So the churn cycle sort of was in a reset last year. This year, we've returned much more to normal. In terms of where we're seeing significant moves, our first grade lost students, which is not typical. Normally, we gain quite a few first grade students, but we gained a huge amount comparatively of second grade students. So that was an unexpected cohort to have a bunch of new students come in. And we saw losses in our fifth and sixth grade. That's very normal, families entering into the middle school sort of cycle of education. That's very common that we will lose students in that window, the six, seven, and eight area. And then normally, we do see a bump in our ninth grade cohort. Not too many people register their seniors of high school, but every once in a while, we do get a few. So that's the less likely areas for us to see a lot of gains. And then as far as who these students are, these individual families are that are coming in, again, we're going to orient you, it's the same preschool years aligned in the same order. And these are the representations of our reporting codes for what student's last school experience was prior to arriving to the public schools of Brookline when they registered. And so I'm just going to go over those codes and what those mean and what they implicate. So the first is those students who are arriving from US public schools. So that's any place outside of the state of Massachusetts within the US who had been attending a public school before and they've moved to Brookline and they are choosing to attend public school again. The next section is students who are arriving to Brookline and their prior school experience was a private school somewhere in the US. Then we next have new to education system. And what this means is kindergarten. These are only students who are entering kindergarten. And it's very key that I'm making a point that the number of students registering in the summer for kindergarten, these are those who did not make it in time. Either they didn't live here yet, they forgot, hadn't decided whether they were going to engage in public education as a Brookline resident for their kindergartner. They did not make the pre-registration period, which runs from January through June. So these are only for summer enrollments of kindergartners. And then the next group is families who have moved into Brookline from another Massachusetts district whose children were previously public school students. And then we have Massachusetts private schools. Some of these students may have already been Brookline residents attending private school. Others were from other municipalities moving in and choosing to move from private to public. And so there's a mixed bag there as far as where their last place of residence may have been. And every year, we annually have a few students who may be engaged in home education plans, homeschooling, who return back to the public system. And, and then the last big cohort is our international students. And what that means does not mean that their place of origin or place of birth was outside of the United States. It simply means their last educational experience was outside the United States. So we have many families who maybe go away for a year sabbatical for parents and they study abroad for a year or two and then return back to Brookline. Those students are equally well included in that cohort of international students. And what I'll just sort of point out here is that the trend and pattern, you can see these bands are quite proportional to one another across these three years. This year, we found a few fewer homeschool students returning back, but our homeschool population has also decreased as we're exiting the pandemic period of many more families had chosen to homeschool. We're finding that that population is smaller in general, so we would have fewer returning. And in terms of families coming to us from outside the US, the countries of origin of those students is quite typical. There was no disproportionate place of origin for any particular group of students outside of the typical Brookline pattern of places of origin. And so we are right on trend and we are welcoming all these many, many families in through during the summer. And what that ultimately comes to is our October 1 number. So the exciting official number, and as Susan mentioned, we can confirm that as of today, DESI has certified that our number is correct and final. So as of this year, we have 7,023 students enrolled in the public schools of Brookline as reported to DESI. And I'm going to just make a quick couple of caveats about what that number includes and what it doesn't include, just so that you're looking at sort of a fuller picture. Because of the types of reporting that DESI requires, some of our students don't fall into this number. So the first group of those students is those students who are in early childhood education, who are under the age of three at, as of October 1. So we have 13 students in our classrooms who are not represented here because their birthdays are a little bit later and they will turn three as the school year program. and they will turn three as the school year progresses, but they are in there and they are acting as general education uh mo role models in our preschool classrooms um to fill out those um and engage those preschool classrooms. So we acknowledge those thirteen students and honor their presence in our classrooms. And then the other group of students who is not represented in this seven thousand twenty-three students is our students who are currently uh in out of district special education programs. We report those students, we just report them separately because of the way that DESI um covers that kind of information. They request it go into separate streams, so we are also going to represent our sixty-six students that we report this school year um as our out of district students. We may have more than sixty-six students, just as a little asterisk on that asterisk. And because of the uh various agreements and cost sharing with perhaps divorced families who live in multiple municipalities, there are some agreements and some complications. So the sixty-six students are those that we are financially accounting for this year. And that may change uh, you know, by annually and uh for some students, so just keep that out of mind. But again, we represent them and honor them as our school population. Um, and generally speaking, the point here is that the trend is quite flat. Uh, we are sixteen students fewer than we were in the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, and that was only uh, you know, nineteen students fewer than the year prior, so we are very much flat um and pretty consistent, which is exactly what we had expected. We were not expecting any drastic shifts up or down um in projections, which Susan will um share more about with you in a few minutes. And and we just wanted to take a couple of moments and sort of show you what the sort of overall um pattern, what this what this number looks like and how it distributes out to our schools. Um, so we've chosen to present to you the average class sizes, because of course that's, you know, that's the lived experience of our students in our schools um at our elementary school level, because the way that high school courses work is quite a bit more complicated and it's not just sort of like uh placing a class. We've chosen to use this elementary model to present to you. Uh, the key here, um I will also note that this slide has been updated from the one that was uh maybe in your packet. Um, there was a typo, so it has been corrected. You will get a corrected um copy if you haven't already of this slide. Um, but just in case you're looking at a paper sheet that looks different than what you see on the screen, this is uh the correct data. Um, overall, what we can say here is that our class sizes are excellent. Um, to have class sizes averaging, you know, twenty or under is spectacular. Um, we really do have capacity to absorb new students without, you know, expanding staff. Um, and, you know, of course, as I mentioned earlier, we will continue to welcome new students throughout the school year. The enrollment number that's seven thousand twenty-three students is not static. Um, it's already moving uh as we are speaking, you know, into November, we've seen changes in our school population and will continue to do so. Um, but the good news is the way that our class sizes are distributed, we do have the capacity to absorb new students as they arrive um without making drastic changes. And we can always use our buffer zones um to help us moderate these class sizes. So when we observe any uh concern that things are getting more um full than uh like classes in a neighboring school, we're able to use those buffer zones to um do our best to have students and staff have equitable experiences of class sizes. Um, and uh just a couple of things that I think might peek out to other folks as they sort of observe these columns here. Um, we did see some class depreciations in our Pierce community, particularly in first grade and eighth grade. Our eighth grade cohort's somewhat small um across the board, just in general, by the way. Um, but because of the Pierce school construction project, we did see some folks choose to either not come or they left or they chose different school options. Um, this is quite normal for construction projects. I've been uh doing this here in Brookline for uh ten years now and I think this is about the fourth or fifth school um that's been under construction. And every time the project, especially in its first year, um starts, it's quite normal to see um a depreciation in class sizes. Um, the loss in first grade was larger than anticipated, as I discussed a little bit earlier. Um, we saw the bump in grade two, but the the loss in grade one was um definitely observable and you can see that at Pierce um as uh in particular. Um, and then over at Driscoll in their middle elementary classes, you can see that some of those class sizes are uh on the larger side. They're well within the cu- the the class size guidelines um that we work with and try to maintain. Um, but the popularity of Driscoll School is perking up a little bit and some of those um sections have been collapsed in prior years due to, again, building construction depreciation. Um, so they're totally within management, but those are some of our bigger classes. Um, and then I am going to pass this right back over to Susan so she can uh talk to you a little bit more about um how we got there and how well we did with our best guesses about uh the the crystal ball of enrollment.
Yeah. Thank you, Megan. That was uh, that was excellent. Uh, one of the things that I was noticing as she was presenting is that uh fifty percent of the new students that arrive in each of those years have been from international schools previously. And I was thinking to myself how that, when I look at um uh DESI student um demographic data here in Brookline, one of the things that I had noticed is is how high our ELE population is and that our program is pretty substantial here and it's an area in which we have some concerns. Um, and seeing that here tonight, I made this connection between that in a real, you know, kind of epiphany way, you know, the connection between the two. So I thought it would, I would share that as I was observing uh that that data point um uh and making the connection with the with the other data point that I'd shared at the finance committee last month. So um I, now we're going to turn our attention to our projections. So there were two projections last year. Um, one that uh was in-house and it was very simple. What we what we did last year uh in-house was just to roll the cohorts for forwards. So kindergarten became first grade, first second, second to third. We made no adjustments uh as the cohorts moved up. Uh, didn't have enough data at the time, coming back off of um COVID. You couldn't really make really meaningful inference from cohort survival because the the year that we were looking at and the out years were were just uh odd because of of COVID. Um, so we opted last year to just move the cohorts forward for the kindergarten. We said kindergarten would be the same um this year as they were last year, having no other information. Also, we had the Cropper McGibben uh team come in and do this, you know, really comprehensive study and presented us their their uh report back in February, which was, of course, well after we had presented the budget. So I thought it would be interesting, because I'm a bit geeky like that, to to look at, you know, how did the October one enrollments uh look in comparison to these two pro- projections? To see what I could learn from that and and also are are there ways in which we could strengthen our um methodology in order to, you know, close any any gap? So uh in looking at uh this information, the first um thing I I'd like to call out is like the overall projection, not by grade level, but when we look uh globally, uh the projections were pretty pretty strong. Um, uh, we were a little, we we projected a little higher than what the enrollments came in, but not anything that would be like sta- statistically significant, really. And uh when I look at um the changes between overall our projection, um if you take out uh preschool, we're pretty much overall on point. So in other words, if I take out the the change in preschool um of sixty-two students and I subtract that from uh seven thousand eighty-two, we're at seven thousand twenty and the enrollments came in at seven thousand twenty-three. Pretty good. Happy to see that. Um, but what you can see also, as Megan pointed out, is that in some grades, we had shifts that that were a little surprising to us, so I want to point those out. Uh kindergarten, for one, both Cropper as well as our in-house projection was higher um than what our October one enrollment came in at. So we had projected four hundred and ninety-one, Cropper five hundred and two, but the actual number was four hundred and seventy-three. So that was, that was really kind of surprising, especially with um uh Hancock Village and some of these other, you know, you know, hotspot areas that we were, you know, wondering how how that would impact us. In fact, um out of the uh Hancock Village uh um development, we've only had eight students enroll. So that was significantly less than what projections uh had been made. Um, you know, leading up to uh the approval of that and then the anticipation of the impact. So we've only had eight students enroll from from there. Of course, more more housing is coming online. Um, and so we still have kind of our eye to that, but it hasn't been uh significant. And as Megan pointed out, we have capacity within our um uh class sizes to absorb more students without hitting guideline. Um, so I wanted to to point that out. And then uh first grade, you know, it looks looks pretty consistent there. Uh, but the second grade, our projections were low, you know, we don't have really an explanation for why that is. Uh, that number was um was was quite a bit lower than either of our projections. And then again, in the fourth grade, um our projections were low. So um those were kind of some of the areas that 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 we wouldn't have necessarily thought that there'd be a a bigger variation. Of course, as Megan pointed out, um in everything that I've looked at, you can see outmigration of students as they move into the middle school grades and then um some return back at the high school uh level. Um, so uh that that isn't surprising and that was, you know, uh somewhat taken into account. Um, but cohorts would be adjusted as you roll them up based on that. So that, those were kind of the impressions and uh the overall um, you know, kind of conclusions uh that we've made as we looked at how we landed versus how our projections came in. So uh it it influenced a bit um how we approached the projection this year. Uh, we do have, as Megan said, some stability in how our numbers are looking, um which is great because it 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 allows us to to identify patterns. Um, and uh some are validating and some are 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 new. But um uh as we approach this this uh projection for twenty-sixth, we rolled forward the cohorts as you would. Um, but we then we made some some tweaks to the numbers um based on cohort survival method. We looked at a three-year uh rolling average and a four-year um to see uh what we could learn. We leaned more heavily on the three-year because um we still felt that there was more COVID recovery uh back in the uh four years ago than that wouldn't necessarily, you know, uh serve us to to consider as as uh as a as a strong marker of of where uh patterns might exist. So what I provided here is is a list of uh where we made adjustments to the cohorts um in an effort to uh even s- strengthen our our methodology. Now, uh you could say, well, that was, you were pretty close the last time, I why not uh stay stay the course? Um, and uh some of this is because when we're looking overall is one thing, but we have to budget and plan for it by grades, right? And so if we can get a better um, if we can hone in on um projections by grade and make some modifications there, uh we'll see how that, you know, making these tweaks to our methodology serves us when we look at October one enrollments next year. But um we felt these were prudent and justified. So uh for so for example, when we rolled the kindergarten up to the first grade, we added fifteen students. Um, when we rolled the first grade up to the second grade, we added fifteen, et cetera. So that's how you use this chart to understand. If I didn't make an adjustment, we just simply rolled forward a cohort, okay? So you can kind of follow the math if you look through. Um, so I don't need to 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 read it off. You you can kind of look it over at your leisure. Um, I think the 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 bigger story here is that um overall, we anticipate enrollments to go down again slightly next year, not significantly, just slightly. So our 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 pattern, our overall um pattern looks looks similar and will look similar next year. Uh, where it is impacting um our numbers is uh really at the middle school and the high school, the variation is bigger there. Um, and so at the middle school, what what you see uh rolling up is uh is is uh a bigger middle school population in general as you move the cohorts up. At the high school, you have a um um a a large outgoing class um and a smaller incoming class um from the eighth grade. And so uh that really is, in essence, why you see uh fifty-nine um uh a reduction of fifty-nine students overall at the high school. So uh, you know, that those are the projections we have. We're we'll we'll continue to monitor, you know, Ma- Megan provides me with um the data monthly and I, you know, put it in my, you know, I look at the class sizes and and all of that. If there's any further tweaks that need to be made before we finalize the budget, um, you know, I would I would call that out, but um I'm inclined to stick with these as our forecast since uh they landed pretty solid last year. Um, I think we continue with our planning using this data. It has been shared with the administrative team and and as we've uh begun the budget building process, uh, these are the numbers we're using. So that concludes our report.
Susan, you may have said this. Go back a slide, Megan or whoever's driving. How how do these projections compare to Cropper?
Yeah, so Cropper's overall were about one one percent. Uh, uh, it's it's not significant, right? But ours were a little tighter than theirs overall. Um, and again, if you take out the preschool on both of them, uh you know, you're you're talking less than a percentage, a really, really small number. So um the other thing too I want to mention is that for kindergarten this year, we were were staying with what our kindergarten was this year, but because it was you know, much lower than what we anticipated it would be, I've added ten um to the kindergarten where last year I had just um, you know, kept the number the same. I did increase um the forecast for kindergarten to be ten higher because I just didn't feel that it warranted like, like it seemed like it might be an anomaly that we had a dip and I just didn't want to, I didn't want to um uh overreact to what we experienced this year. Um, and it and it really, if you if you take it across every 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 school and you're adding ten across eight schools, you're adding one. It it it's not going to have any appreciable difference, but, you know, um, I felt it was warranted, so I added ten there. Any questions? We're happy to take them. Um.
Yeah, thanks very much, Susan and Megan. I see Mariah's hand up, so go ahead, Mariah.
Thank you. Thanks, Susan, and thanks, Megan, for the presentation. Um, my question, I think, was what Linus was answering, but I don't think you answered it, Susan. My question was, how does the next year projection, enrollment projection compare to the Cropper McKibben projection? I thought when you answered, you were talking about the actuals of this year, but I thought he was asking about the projection for next year. I could be wrong.
Yeah, one of the areas that I I I leaned more towards um our methodology because I felt ours was a little bit tighter in comparison. When I looked at, I was going to use the Cropper enrollment for kindergarten, but the number didn't make sense to either Megan and I. So we uh our professional judgment was to go with our um our number as opposed to theirs because it was it was significantly less, although I understand that theirs is based on far more data points than ours. Um, I it just didn't feel, I didn't feel comfortable moving forward with that. But we did look, we did look and we weighed that. Um, but uh.
So it so it informed your um numbers as opposed to being presented alongside it. You used it as a data source?
We, exactly, exactly.
Okay.
And 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 the churn rate and all these other pieces that we see boots on the ground that you can't necessarily take into consideration. And they did try in their last report to account for that, but yeah, so, and we did look at NASDAQ as well. We tried to look at all of those and 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 in our best judgment, we felt that uh based on what we're seeing um in local trends right now, this was the methodology we felt would best service in the upcoming year.
Thank you. And then one more question. Um. Free K, I remember when we talked about it last year, we talked about how the Pre-K, I remember when we talked about it last year, we talked about how the October 1 number versus the sort of program capacity are extremely different because many spots are being, because the spots are held during the year or are filled during the year in, in part due to children who acquire IEPs during the year. And so one of the things that I was struck by in the numbers was when we include these numbers and we're presuming that there's going to be 320, but then there's 260, but that was really part of the plan. But then it makes it look like we dropped enrollment when we really didn't necessarily drop enrollment. And the same thing with your projections. You're projecting a drop, but then if those students actually are there, like, we're not, because we might have more than, I don't know how many students we have, like, whenever it is at the peak. But to me, just the pre-K thing is throwing me off because we're comparing, I think, actuals to projections when the, when there's a different, I think it's an apples and oranges.
It is a bit because one of the things we learned through the process last year was that we were looking at a capacity number, not knowing some of the nomenclature that's used here in Brookline. You know, every place that you go, you use certain terminology. And, and so when looking at the information that came over from BEEP, we interpreted the capacity number as being the enrollment number. And so last year, when we moved forward in the planning process, we had overestimated. And so the 321 is really not reflective of what your historical enrollments in preschool have been. We did look at that. 259 is, is pretty consistent with the enrollments in BEEP in prior years. Megan and I looked at that. But you're right, it, it does throw this presentation off, which is why I mentioned if you, if you took out the preschool numbers and you then compared it as a whole, our numbers are pretty, are, are much closer. But there was a, a little misunderstanding when we put the data together last year that we, of course, corrected for now. Megan can certainly speak to...
Yeah, and I was just going to affirm, Mariah, that, that, you know, as I was talking about how the enrollment will, will flex and bend and change throughout the year, that's more true in pre-K probably than any other grade because it is, as you said, we are holding seats for children who become eligible for special education services when they turn three. So those are not filled because we need to have them available when, when children arrive. And seats are filled through the year for other reasons as well. Just, you know, interest as well with the new full day program. There's lots of different components that families are considering when choosing BEEP over a private daycare program, which is always true, but I think with the new programming offered this year, families are a little bit still trying to figure things out. And the, the program, you know, I'm still enrolling kids into BEEP in November, which is wonderful. We can't wait to welcome the little munchkins in. But I think that, you know, when I say our peak number is not October 1, no, no one class is more true than, than BEEP, those pre-K numbers.
All right, thanks. I see Stephen's hand up, and then Carolyn.
Thanks, and thanks for the presentation. I have another question about the Cropper forecast and its value. So I know this is just one year's dataset, but I'm wondering, I'm just wondering about your assessment of the value of the Cropper forecasts, given that you were able to get a figure pretty close to their forecasts with what you called a, a pretty rough model of your own. Is it that, that we don't require as sophisticated a model as what Cropper provides, or is it more that we got lucky with our forecast? Or that if you replicated our model in enough years, we would need a more sophisticated model to capture outlier events that didn't crop up this year? I, I'm curious about your take about the value to Brookline of investing in Cropper-McKibben studies in general.
I think it's always good to have a benchmark, right? Otherwise, you, you, you know, you're not, you know, I, I don't believe in use one data point when you're looking at information, right? And so I find it to be valuable as a source of, you know, as you true up your projections, you know? What other information should I be looking at and how should we, how, how does that influence the choices we were going to make, you know, when we...
Wait, Susan, are you saying that we need more than one data point in the sense that we need more than one model or we need to run the two models against each other in multiple years?
I, I think that periodically doing a report like Cropper-McKibben's is valuable because it gives you another third-party eye with, that takes a different approach using a different methodology. I think if you look at the overall trends on their report, even in our projection and you look at NASDAQ, they were all pointing in the same direction, right? So it gives me some measure of confidence that when we're looking at numbers decreasing next year, that it's, it, there's a validity, I, I believe, to that because different methodologies that were used to do our projections by NASDAQ last year and Cropper-McKibben's kind of confirm that. So I think it is valuable. I don't think you need to do it every year, but I think doing it periodically is, is enormously helpful. I mean, theirs takes into consideration things that I can't take into consideration, you know? And, and some of that is birth rates and, and all of that. I was hoping that, that I could use that this year when I was projecting kindergarten, but our kindergarten numbers were odd this, this, in, in this year's October 1. So I'd like to see how it looks next year, you know? And like I said, we're going to use this methodology and then we're going to, we're going to assess it again next year. And we'll look at Cropper-McKibben's report, we'll look at ours, we'll see how we land, and then we'll be able to better know exactly what value it does bring to us. But I, I think it was, it was worth the investment.
Okay, thanks. That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
And I will just make a note that Cropper-McKibben themselves would tell you and remind you that they don't have a projection, they have a forecast. And NASDAQ does a projection, so if we get into the nuance of that a little bit, given the, the demography factors that they're using and Cropper-McKibben, it's so broad and there's so much nuance to Brookline as a community with birth rates that don't always perfectly translate as they might in a community that's a little less mobile. That, that's where the kindergarten part makes it a little bit tricky for all of those models.
I see. Thank you again.
Carolyn.
Thank you. Thank you, Megan and Susan. Megan, I'm sure that it's a lot of information to pull together on top of all of your daily work getting kids into our schools, so thank you. I have two questions. Okay, notwithstanding what I just said, I would love to see the school by school breakdown, sort of like what you put in the, the budget books where we see each school, grade, classes...
Yeah, the little table by...
Yeah, I mean, this is great averages, but this tells us sort of one thing, but it's, I think it's important and interesting at least for us to know the experience in the, in the buildings, especially because some of our buildings, you talk about staff capacity and then we have building capacity. Like we know Lawrence feels crowded, Baker feels crowded, Driscoll probably doesn't feel crowded. So I think that's important too.
Yeah.
If you could get that at some point, that would be awesome.
Yeah.
And if there's a way to do it, or maybe we just include, I liked, I mean, it was helpful for the purposes of us understanding how you were budgeting, that you, I'll do it your way. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
17 to 7, like to the next year, and then sort of how true these stayed, those numbers turned out to be would be interesting. Do you know what I'm saying? Like where you brought, I don't know...
Move the cohorts forward?
Exactly. And I'm, so I'm just curious whether...
I haven't looked at that. I do have the other, because I was looking at, we, we've looked at this data in all kinds of different ways.
Yeah.
We tried to summarize it in a way that is not too overwhelming.
Yeah.
But I, but I have, that's, that's easy enough.
But...
We can talk more about the, the other, just so I have a better sense of, of, of what you're hoping to see on that, but the first request I can do.
The, the second one is really just a curiosity whether, where you said, when, when we had the budgeting and you said, for example, like I circled the, the Pierce eighth grade because it's super small. And we knew that, right? It was 15 last year. You projected it would be 15 and it is 15. So just curious...
So...
...whether there were sort of spots where, where those variations are.
I think...
And it might not tell us anything, but I'm just curious. But no big deal.
Yeah.
But thank you. And then also, I just wanted to confirm, I'm sure you mean with the Hancock Village, which is of interest to me because I live in that neighborhood, eight new students moving into Hancock Village...
The new construction facility specifically.
Sorry.
Not in Hancock Village total.
This year?
Yeah, well, it only opened this year.
No.
The tower.
Well, there's two towers. But you, so, so I know that in October of '22, there were 42 new Baker students in the new Hancock Village construction. Like it's been opening in phases, so. And I don't know how many new came last year, but I'm, I just wanted to confirm that was what was meant by the eight.
The eight are the ones that joined us from the new Hancock Village development.
This year?
This year.
Okay.
Eight is for this year.
Yeah.
I, I'm just going to clarify and be super explicit. It is the, the, the brand-new facility that just opened as of this September, the very, very large one.
Yeah, Franklin.
Yes, thank you. I couldn't remember the name, what they're calling the building, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just referred to the Franklin.
The Sherman Building, yeah. The biggest one.
Sherman and Gary.
Yeah.
Yeah. So just that one brand-new facility that just opened, out of that large building that's open, we only gained eight students out of that so far.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's bare, I'm surprised that there's any because I think it's barely open. So, but regardless, thank you. So, but anyway, that's just this year.
Yeah. Yes, just this year.
Yeah, and I, I'm surprised there's, I thought it was not even open yet, so I guess they're opening it in phases. Okay, thank you.
And then just so you know, another part of our process, we meet with the planning department too. That is part of our, our practice is to meet and, and talk with Cara about what is she seeing, what developments are going on.
Yeah.
So, so we do have a nice collaboration with her as well. She gives us more information about, yeah, well, it's been delayed in opening and, you know, so, you know, keep your eye on this or that. So she's, she's been really great to work with as well.
So I'm not up to date on Hancock Village? Are there more phases there that are expected to give us more students?
So it's just this one last building? I do believe that this is the final significant...
They've applied for, so the, so the, the biggest building, which is 250 units, is, they haven't finished construction completely, but I guess there's at least eight people living in it. And then they have applied for adding more units to the, to the first big building. So there are two big buildings. One has 250 units, one has 127 units, I think. They've applied to add, I don't know, 25 more or something units there.
Okay, but the great majority of eventual units have opened or are about to open.
Our, the construction is complete or almost nearly.
Good. All right, thanks. All right, does anyone else have questions or comments about the enrollment report? Suzanne, yep?
Yeah, I think I'm following up maybe on Carolyn's first comments. So when I'm looking at the page that has the class size average by grades by schools, some of those are four-section schools, some of them are three-section schools.
Yes.
And some maybe two. And that makes a big difference when we think about class size, right? So if it's a four-section school, you would do that.
Well, the ability to collapse is what it influences.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, so, so for that reason, I guess it would really help us in budgeting going forward.
Absolutely. Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
Thanks. And it'd be in the same format you've been seeing it in, so it'll, yeah, it's not a problem.
Andy, can I make one more comment?
I see Mariah again, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that the Cropper-McKibben report though, I mean, I think you mentioned this, Susan, but I would just elaborate that if I recall correctly, it shows pretty flat projections for the first five years, following by escalating projections in the out-years. And I think that, that, so that kind of data is very valuable because if we just are looking one year ahead at what's going on, we aren't able to react to future trends. So the two reports are, are complementary and it's really helpful to have that long-term perspective informed by demographic trends and birth and death rates, which are valuable. Thank you.
That's really helpful, Mariah. Thanks for that.
All right, thank you, Megan and Susan. I guess we're moving on now to the fiscal year '25 first quarter report.
Susan, do you want to do it or do you want me to? Typically, I would just give a quick summary and, and if I miss anything, you can fill in. Does that sound okay?
Sounds fine.
All right, take it away.
Thanks. So we heard the first quarter report at Finance last night and a couple of highlights from the report. One is that it's our first quarterly report that was delivered as a site-based report, meaning that it reported the budget for both salary and non-salary expenses for each of the 10 schools and then for the five central offices. And that ties with how the budget was provided last year and that ties with how it should be provided as per the school reform, ed reform of the 1990s. So that is a great update and allows us to keep things aligned, which is wonderful. We talked about some of the trends and the interesting quirks of schools in which you often see non-salarious expenses highly front-loaded in the first quarter and yet personnel expenses tend to lag because school has just started. With that said, Administration and Finance Office is able to project based on running salary, based on encumbrances, encumbrances in the non-salary line, they're able to project where we will end up the year. And that's really exciting because that happening in the first quarter means that we have time to course correct. And so the net projected deficit at this point is around 1.2 million. Am I remembering Susan correctly?
Yes.
I don't have the report. Yeah, 1.2 million. But senior leadership will be looking at that, making some decisions and hopefully coming, well, not hopefully, and will be coming back with a plan to adapt. And that'll be reported to Finance Subcommittee next month. Did I miss anything, Susan?
Is there any place on this document where, where we're seeing something related to those projections?
The bottom.
These are only the hard facts as we currently know them.
So if you, Andy, if you turn to the last page of the general fund budget, you'll see the last table is all in.
Yeah.
So it shows all of the salaries, the expenses to date, and then I've encumbered what I, we believe is going to be the remaining expense from now until the end of the year, if everything remains as it is right now. The two, the two things I want to point out about the salary deficit is, part of that was known, right? We knew that we had not captured all of the extra comp pieces because I couldn't see them last year. I didn't know them. And so a lot of the work that has taken place in this first quarter is getting our arms around what is the extra comp pieces here because it's $5.5 million worth of salary expense, which is significant. Of course, the, the base salary is the, the bigger number, but if you're off by $1 million, then that's not a good thing, right? So we have to know what we're obligated to and how much our programs cost. And so there's been a lot of work done to try to pull that information together. The long and the short of it is that $726,000 of that 1.2 million's is attributed to extra compensation that we were, were not able to identify last year in time to include it in the budget. So that's, that's the most significant part of the deficit. The other part is really, when, when you put together a, a budget, we know inherently that we're going to have open positions throughout the year. We also know that we're going to have people lead... We also know that we're going to have people leave at, let's say, master's 15, step 10, and we're going to hire somebody at a, at a bachelor's step five. We also know that we're going to budget for somebody at master's step five and hire a PhD with master's eight, right? And so we call, this variation is called breakage. And so we had anticipated that we would accumulate a breakage of about 1.2 million dollars. I haven't realized that yet. I wouldn't realize that yet in the first quarter of the year. So if everything remains the same right now, we're still going to have to address this $726,000. But I should be able to accumulate close to what I need to close the remaining gap of that 1.2 million dollars with positions that go unfilled. We won't be hiring more staff. We'll just be replacing staff as they exit and come back. So that's, that's, well, I'll see better as we get closer. In historically, you have used a placeholder of 600,000. So I pressed that. Last year, when I was looking at the salary information, it was like two and a half million dollars. We had a lot of positions that went unfilled. The good news is, is that with all of the innovation and restructuring of HR and payroll that we opened this year with almost a full complement of professional staff, which was not true last year or the year before, the year before. So as our fill rate becomes better and we are able to retain staff throughout the year, especially your professional staff, it's fantastic. But that also means that the breakage, so I'm in a, a place this year where the good news and the bad news. We did really super over here and hopefully we'll, we'll close the gap. And I'll be able to report out it next time and unencumber any unused resources for open positions. So I just wanted to make note of that.
Thanks. Now Carolyn?
Thanks. And I'm going to shamelessly just say that there's something I totally don't understand. And I was in the finance meeting yesterday, but part of the time I was at the pediatrician with my son. This is so clear. Thank you so much. And I, I'm going to ask this question because I really want to, I feel like I have the potential to, to, you are giving me the potential to really follow this. So the 720.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Yeah.
Are you saying that that's this breakage number that you're, okay. That is, is that from last year?
Yes.
Okay, okay. That was the, like, all that, so when you say comp, that's like comp time? Extra hours that, or compensation?
Compensation.
Okay.
So there's additional compensation. It comes in the form, we kind of categorize it in four buckets, right? There's, there's benefits that, that folks get that are not part of their base salary. So it's extra compensation. It can be for stipends, for coaching, asked before and after school. It's your summer programming. So it's not part of somebody's base pay.
Yep.
In fact, it comes in the form of additional compensation. So longevity, sickly buybacks, vacation buybacks, all that funded, all under the category of benefits. Subs, things like that.
Okay.
So when, when a teacher is out, if a paraprofessional covers for them, they get a differential. Custodians get a differential for working different shifts. All of that is extra compensation. So what I was able to capture in the budget last year was most all of the items identified in the CBAs. But there's things that were not clearly defined in the CBAs that, that, that had to play their way out because the documentation was not in a form that I could, I could, that I could clearly see what we were paying for and why and to what extent. So in other words, the coaches, unless I have a budget that tells me I'm hiring, and this isn't, I'm just using this as an example because actually athletics is, is, was probably one of the cleaner ones. But it's easier for people to understand if I talk about that. But if I don't have a budget that says I'm going to hire 25 coaches in the fall and this is the amount of money, then what I have is a number and I don't know what the number means. So in order to be able to know and manage a budget, you have to have some detail that you're managing from. And that's what was lacking in extra compensation and has been lacking for quite some time. So this is not, so this is good news. It's good news. So when I say extra compensation, it's those forms of compensation that people receive that is above and beyond their base pay for other assignments that they can apply for.
And then, but still, what is the seven?
So that's 700, so the delta on that, what we were not able to capture, the deficit associated with this extra compensation that is unfunded in the budget right now is $726,000. The other part is that the 1.2 million dollars that I was going to make up in unfilled positions and breakage from hiring people at, from a higher level to a lower level. So I have some capacity there. I haven't realized 1.2 million dollars. And so therefore I still have to carry the salary. However, we will have unfilled positions as the year goes on because we always have a certain amount of turnover. And so I'll pick up more as I go along. So of the 1.2 million, 700,000 is extra comp and the other delta is really associated with that. And that second part should tighten up as we go through the year. And so the next quarterly report, I would see that go down, right? So our deficit from that piece should close, but I don't have an answer for how we're going to cover the 726,000. And that's what senior leadership will meet and, and discuss how we're going to close that gap in the upcoming weeks. Was that helpful? Did I clarify?
Any other questions or comments on the first quarter financial report? Well, thank you very much, Susan, for, for the restructuring of the report to be building-based and for the early attention to the fact that we're maybe running a bit hot. Yeah.
As I said last night, the good news is, you know, that we're really making significant progress. The bad news is, is as we make progress and we put these internal controls in place, the good news is we see it early. And that was the whole point, right? When you have good internal controls, you, you know about it. And when you know about it, it gives you options, you know? So we don't run into a situation where you have to jam on the brakes and stop, you know, programming. That would be unnecessary. We can make informed decisions because we have the data well in advance of, of, of a catastrophic event happening, right? So thank you.
All right. This brings us to our one school committee action of the night. This is about possibly going to the Supreme Judicial Court to try to expand eligibility for the Abidin Scholarship. Mariah, do you want to summarize what we learned at finance?
Sure. So yesterday we heard from Susan Harris in the office of town council, John Hodgman, who is a member of BCF and initiated some of the scholarship programs in the town, Scott Bouchard, who's a former high school teacher retired, who is also on the high school scholarships committee. And they let us know that the scholarship request, which was made about 100 years, about 100 years ago, has grown from the initial amount of $3,000 to approximately $3.4 million. And the reason for this is that the scholarship is designated for female students who attend either Radcliffe or Simmons, I believe was the second school. Was it Simmons? I believe it was Simmons.
Yes.
Thank you. And again, doing this off of memory. And there's a limited number of students who are eligible for this award. And so to, there is a mechanism available called CPRE, which is, allows, that would allow the town to expand the eligibility of potential recipients to beyond those, just those two schools. And so the vote that the finance subcommittee recommended unanimously to the full school committee would essentially allow town council to pursue this within the state to, to allow the original designation to be broadened. And so that is the motion, which is in front of us, which I do not have the wording of in front of me. But Betsy, are you going to pull it up?
I happen to have the wording in front of me. Shall I just go ahead and make the motion? And then we can have the discussion.
It's on the screen too.
Oh, I see. Well, in that case, Mariah, do you want the honor?
Sure. So I'll make the motion to vote to authorize that the office of town council, on behalf of the school committee, seek the assent of the attorney general's office and file a complaint for CPRE with the Supreme Judicial Court to modify the restrictions on the Abidin fund to increase the pool of eligible recipients.
Do we have a second? Okay. Suzanne, the seconds. All right. Let's open the floor for any discussion. Anyone have questions on this?
Yeah, I do.
Jesse?
The original two colleges were for female colleges. And I wonder what the discussion was in finance, Mariah, about when it says extending it to student, well, female students to any college they go to. Was there any discussion about restricting it in CPRE to just female colleges potentially in Massachusetts?
Not that I recall.
Okay. Cause I mean, Radcliffe merged into Harvard, so that's not available, but there are.
No, they would. They are already, to your point, they're already giving students, but Harvard already gives full financial support.
Right.
But I believe Harvard was one of the ones that was allowed between the time that, this is what I understood from yesterday. Between the time that Radcliffe merged with Harvard, but before Harvard was giving full financial support, some students were receiving it. That's what I understood from our conversation.
My question had to do more with the, I, I get that. My question had more to do with the fact that CPRE generally is used to say, you know, in the same manner in which the original person who, who wrote, who had the will written, is just sort of in the same line of thinking they might have had. So I was thinking, you know, Radcliffe and Simmons were both female-only colleges. I wonder if the original intention now to be broadened would still hold a condition that it had to be a female college, female-only college for undergraduate as compared to any college.
We didn't discuss it like that. We only discussed the fact that some of the recipients did go to Harvard. So I guess there's already the, the track record that it's being applied to schools that are not women only.
Do we have, do we have Mr. Hodgman available to try to answer that?
Hi, this is.
Oh, they're all yours.
Susan Harris from the town council. I might be able to jump in if that's helpful.
Okay, good. Yeah.
So as, as you noted, CPRE has to do with looking to the original intent of the donor. There's really no one right answer, one right answer here. It really requires considering what the original intention was in the will and then what the so-called waste or unspent funds is. So taking a look at how can the town spend the money that it's looking to spend and avoiding waste while staying as close as possible to the original intent. It does require some guesswork as to the, the original intent. You know, at the time the will was written in 1914, Simmons and Radcliffe, as you noted, were female-only colleges. But women could really only go to female-only colleges at that point for the most part. So we are not looking to change the restriction on the award benefiting female graduates. We are looking to expand it beyond those two schools because those schools are doing a pretty good job of meeting the unmet financial need of the students attending there. So we are, we have not narrowed down exactly what the restriction will be. We're continuing to research this and we'll be working with the attorney general's office. We think it's likely that we would be seeking to leave in place a preference to female students attending Harvard and Simmons and then expanding eligibility beyond that.
Does that answer your question, Jesse?
Not yet, because I'm still, expanding eligibility to all colleges is different than to female-only colleges.
I understood Susan to be saying that, that it hasn't actually been decided yet of what the, yeah.
Sure. Okay.
All right. Anyone else have questions on this? If not, then I think we can move to a vote. Jesse?
Yeah, I guess one, just a quick question. Is this going to come back to us then after the AG office comes up with a, with a decision for the town to make the decision? Or is this the only vote we're going to have?
Susan, do you mind walking us through how this process would go?
Sure. So I think, you know, we could leave it to you a little bit. I think our, our view was that we would be coming to you now, getting permission to file this complaint and, and intending that you would sort of defer to us in our work with the attorney general's office and crafting what the CPRE complaint would look like. From here, if we have your authorization, this will go before the select board for their authorization as well, since it is litigation, so it is controlled by them. We could come back if that's something that the school committee wants. But I don't know that that is necessary. I guess it depends on what your view is.
I'm content to leave this to the office of town council unless somebody wants to make a motion that's different.
No, that's fine.
All right. So let's move to a vote then on the motion that's on the floor. Jesse?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Mariah? We'll come back to Mariah.
Yes. Sorry, I couldn't unmute. Yes.
All right. Stephen?
Yes.
Val?
I'm staying.
And I vote yes. So, yeah, thank you for, for those who have done so much speed work in preparing for this. There's been a lot of archival research and a lot of thought that's gone into this up to now. So good luck and thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So this brings us back to public comment, I believe, because we are done with the school committee actions. We're going to, unless somebody has something very urgent to report about subcommittees or liaisons, I think we can forego that segment tonight and just do it next time. And I think we can just resume our public comment that got interrupted earlier.
Can we take the slide down, Andy?
Yes. Okay. We're, we're starting this 15 minutes earlier than, than I'd said before. So, you know, obviously anyone who is not here, we can come back to them. But the next on the list right now would be Stephanie Spector.
Andy, I'm sorry. Before we start, can I just say that policy subcommittee is going to have public comment at it, at our next meeting next week. So I just want to get the word out on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's sort of about anything?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't understand that. What, what, what do you mean, Steve?
We're, we're inviting the community to give public comment on issues that come before the policy subcommittee next week.
Oh, so, so the public comment is meant to be on the policies that we're discussing next week, not on anything that's on the minds of the public?
No, and any matters that come before the policy subcommittee.
Ever?
Ever, of all time.
I see. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. So the next speaker on our list is Stephanie Spector. Ms. Spector, are you available right now? Okay. Okay. So Masun Batli is, is the next on the list. And while we're waiting, let me just repeat what I said before the first segment for anyone who wasn't here. So the school committee's practice is that we listen carefully to every speaker, but we don't respond or react in the moment. And secondly, since we are all responsible for keeping our students and staff safe, we're requesting you not to name individual students or staff or speak about them in a way that allows them to be identified as individuals. Okay. It seems like the next person on the list who's available right now is Nirit Friedlander. Oh, yeah. We can see you, but not yet hear you. Yeah, you're muted. There you are. Hi.
Hi, hello. My name is Nirit Friedlander and I'm chair of ICAN Israeli American Civic Action Network. And I have a friend whose daughter attends this school and is terrified. I'm speaking on her behalf.
I'm sorry, Ms. Friedlander. Just a few seconds ago, I don't know if you were on at the time, but I specifically asked that individuals not be named or in fact spoken about in a way that allows them to be personally identified.
Okay. I'm sorry. How did we get to a point where we need to ask educators not to legitimize a speaker who spreads hateful speech and incites violence? Is it reasonable to give a platform to a student who celebrates October 7th as a year of resistance? Who advocates the mass murder of? Who advocates that mass murder of the elderly and infants and the brutal rape of young girls is a revolution? Who justifies heinous acts of terror, supports horrific anti-Semitic actions, and downplays the suffering of innocents, innocent people as part of a movement? On what grounds? Are you serious? This is not about freedom of speech, because freedom of speech doesn't include incitement and the promotion of murder. Freedom of speech doesn't include the freedom to call to genocide as an advocacy for a revolution when it is in fact an advocacy for genocide. Where is the freedom of students to feel safe? Where is the freedom of students to feel that their school is their safe place, where they will receive the support and respect that our educational community deserves? We urgently demand that this student be immediately prevented from speaking. This student should be brought in for a disciplinary conversation. Instead of educating him about humanity, you are giving him a stage in front of all the school students, including Israeli and Jewish students who are still suffering from the trauma of the October 7th massacre? Students who undoubtedly have varying degrees of connection to the victim of the atrocities? Why are you exposing our children to a narrative that claims that ongoing, their ongoing trauma is actually a revolution? Why are you instilling fear in your students? Why do you hope to, what do you hope to achieve in the name of free hate speech? This approach only creates division, hatred, and encouragement of violence against a minority population. I'm here to say that if this event is not immediately canceled, the Israeli-Jewish community will not remain silent. Across all media, everyone will speak out about the school in Brookline that promotes incitement and hatred against Jews. We will make this story go viral. We will ensure that everyone knows about a school that provides a platform for hateful, antisemitic, antisemitic rhetoric under the guise of perspective. We demand to understand one thing. How does a narrative that advocates terror and genocide align with the values of respect for human dignity, basic humanity, and unity? How does this narrative you want to amplify align with normative human values?
And Ms. Friedlander, please wrap it up. You've exceeded the three minutes.
I'm finishing. We implore you not to bring us to a point where in the United States, we as parents must fight for our children's right to feel safe and accepted in their schools. I appeal to your conscience and ethical standards, which can distinguish between legitimate free expression and dangerous messages that involve deep seated hatred and fear. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Friedlander, and let me say again to all speakers, please refrain from naming or identifying individuals who may come under attack as a result of what is said here tonight.
All right, our next speaker is Karen Stenzrude.
Hello, my name is Maya. I'm a junior at BHS, and my mother, Karen Stenzrude, gave me her time to speak today. I think that antisemitism is, of course, an extremely important issue that should be taken completely seriously and addressed appropriately. I also would like to say that I was there last year at the Day of Racial Reconciliation and Solidarity, and the speech that was given that has been referenced recently had an overarching message of cooperation and coexistence between different groups, and I think it's completely inaccurate to assert that a student who's going to be making a prerecorded speech for a school event that will be reviewed by teachers and administrators would in any way have the opportunity to spread hate speech, and I think that it's then inappropriate to single out the student for something that they're simply not doing. And I urge the school committee and the BHS staff to support BHS students in appropriately having the opportunity to engage in a day at BHS that's important for our community and that accurate information is provided about that event. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maya. Okay, Ruby Kitov is next on our list.
Hey, can you guys hear me? Okay. Dear members of the school committee, my name is Ruby Kitov, Manatah Meeting Member in Precinct 6. Thank you for listening to our concerns. We have a student speaker who has to speak at Doors in BHS, and we're very concerned that the student will choose to speak about things that he seems most passionate about, the Israeli-Palestinian conflict or the war in Lebanon, which he revealed in his recent rally. First off, the school has wide latitude on whom to accept as a speaker. This student chose to speak at an event celebrating the massacres of October 7th as a liberatory act of resistance. Would the school ever contemplate platforming someone who speaks at a rally that celebrates a mass-killing event of black people? Of course not, but that is what BHS is about to do, only it's about Jewish people. I understand that the speech will be vetted and prerecorded, but we saw last year that the people vetting such speeches are not sufficiently informed in what will make Israeli students and most Jewish-American students feel marginalized and attacked. That is why we're asking for independent advisors from the potentially affected group to vet the speeches. I also wish to express that the Israeli-Palestinian conflict has no place in an assembly about racial identity in America. For those of you who are not yet aware, Jews come in all colors, there are white Ashkenazi Jews, brown Sephardic Jews, and even black Ethiopian Jews. Israel actually has more Jewish people of color than white people. Jews of all colors and races who were massacred on October 7th. Arabs and Muslims also come in a variety of races, as race is defined in America. Not all Muslims are people of color, so it is difficult to understand why the Israeli-Palestinian conflict is relevant to racial reform. Israel's military operation in Gaza and the settlements in the West Bank are related to disputes around land and religion between two rival indigenous people, not about race in any way, shape, or form. Some teachers at BHS believe that the Jewish colonizer narrative around Israel, where Jews have also been an indigenous population. Modern Israel is made up of Jewish people escaping, escaping from systematic oppression, mass expulsion from the Arab world, and from the worst genocide in history. We know the political views of the two advisors that have volunteered to help vet the student and the speech. We believe they are both anti-Zionist and that both think that it is appropriate to teach the narrative of a genocide in Gaza at a school-wide assembly. One of these advisors also coached the student who spoke last year about Gaza and later thought it was a great speech. If the Israeli-Palestinian conflict comes up in this student's speech, it is bound to inflict harm and cause further divisiveness within school. Should Jewish students walk out of class or skip the day entirely? We might even see a Jewish protest outside of school on the day of Doors. Is this what the administration wants? Isn't Doors meant to educate so that people can understand each other better in order to strengthen the community? BHS has chosen to give a platform to potentially harmful speech. It is not too late to change course and avoid the mistakes of the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kitov. Okay, next up, we have Maysoon Batli.
Hello, I'm a BHS graduate, and I am Arab and Muslim. I made this decision to speak at this meeting when I learned that there was an organized effort by parents to cancel a 17-year-old Palestinian speech. This issue resonates deeply with me because I understand and have experienced firsthand the silencing of Arab and Muslim voices at the school. Now to hear adults organizing against a teenager to prevent him from speaking about his experience is beyond what I imagine possible. To recap what we have heard so far, there is, there is an assumption that the student is going to spew hate speech or to directly quote another parent, spew his feelings. Another person said, I know these people, and that these people are violent in their speech and action. One parent described us Arabs as barbarians. Another student said that, that, another person said that the student describing his experience at the Day of Reckoning would be indoctrination. A parent said he was bullied as a teen for being Jewish and is now participating in an organized bullying campaign against a Palestinian teenager. Another parent called for a walkout on the Day of Racial Reform and Solidarity because he anticipated he would not agree with the perspective of a student. I am shocked, no, horrified and disturbed at the utter unabashed racism I have heard tonight from adults who claim to be educated. The aim of the Day of Racial Reform and Solidarity is to educate students and the school community about race and racism in the U.S. and promote anti-racist practices, activism, and empowerment. That means pushing boundaries and being okay with being uncomfortable. It is not to pretend racism is in the past. Clearly, anti-Arab racism is present and widely accepted in this community. It would be nothing short of hypocritical and laughable to remove a Palestinian student from this event on the basis of his identity. And to the parents who have contributed to this doxing and bullying campaign, shame on you, shame on you, shame on you. I thought you might try to hide your violent racism, but you have made clear exactly what you mean when you say you don't want this student to speak. We don't want to hear a Palestinian kid speak because we don't want to hear what he has to say, because we are genocide apologists and deniers. Thank you.
Thank you, Maysoon. Okay, next up is Zina Osman.
Hi, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I am the, my name is Zina Osman. I'm the rather, the very proud mother of the students that so many speeches have been about, that has been the target of many of the public comments today, including someone naming him. I'm very distressed, and I would honestly have liked for me and my son to be with you in person and have the opportunity to respond to the comments made today, but hearing about the pressure campaign against him, we both did not feel safe in this public forum. Hearing adults call my teenage son barbaric, evil, antisemitic, and hateful on speech and action is disturbing and at the very least dangerous, and honestly tantamount to child endangerment in the community where he lives and the school which he has to turn up every day to receive his education. That these things are being said in such a public forum and in this context means that this committee and the adult parents that spoke these words today must be held accountable. Maybe one of your speakers who spoke of bullying when he was a student at high school can recognize what is happening here, is nothing short of that, and if I may call on his empathy, I would like to bring out, and I would also like to bring out the same empathy in myself to understand what is driving some of the speakers today to attack a teenage boy, but as a mother, as an adult, and as a human, I cannot see any circumstances where that would be acceptable. My son intends to share his experience of being silenced as a Palestinian student living in Brooklyn, how unfortunate and apt that we are witnessing such an example of the silence today, such a horrific one, honestly. In closing, I have a message from my teenage son to the adult parents who are requesting to friend him on social media, and he feels that he finds this creepy.
Including that creep Nirit who tried to friend him yesterday, and just call them by name.
Call them by name. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Osman. All right, next up, we have Lindsay Davis.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Davis. I'm a teacher at Brookline High School and one of the organizers of the day. I've been collaborating with teachers on the lesson plans. I have read each of the speeches for the day. None of them are hateful. There are absolute guidelines for each of the speeches. They need to be personal narratives about race. Three faculty members need to have read them, and they will be prerecorded and embedded into lesson plans. As someone deeply involved in the day, I can tell you that there has been misinformation shared tonight, and I would also extend the invitation for folks in the community to reach out to me. And the supervising dean of the event is Astrid Allen. We are adults who would be the appropriate people to talk about this event. I welcome you into my classroom. I'm at the high school. We can sit down and have a conversation about curriculum and programming at the high school. I would be delighted to have you in. We can sit down together and talk. There have been some adults who have reached out to particular students who are speaking. That is unsafe and needs to stop now. The students are watching and listening to us tonight, and I would encourage us to lead with curiosity and welcome dialogue to support our collective learning moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Davis. Next up, we have Avi List.
Good evening, board, everybody watching, listening, and attending. Thank you for your time and for overall sentiment and consideration of this matter. Obviously, it's nothing easy. I think it's, you know, just a quick step is, I think it's incorrect to accuse the student of doing anything. Oh, and by the way, I'm a parent of a BHS student and another rising student, a BHS student. I don't think it's the child, you know, the student has, everyone's entitled to their own opinion. I think the issue is the content and the delivery versus, you know, actually what the actual speech is, right? So, I'm an attorney also, and the First Amendment is, you know, not so ambiguous, but obviously, if there's untruths and it's dangerous and it could involve incitement, it does create a significant concern and issue, and when the local community is saying that this would be insightful, this is hateful, and there is a question as to the accuracy and intent of the speech, that's something that the, that the school board should look at, and that's for all, for all people contributing, not just this one particular speech that is at topic this evening. You know, I worked for a little bit with the Anti-Defamation League, and I can tell you that in general, these types of events, while their intent is incredible and generally the results are overwhelmingly very positive, what happens is the intent never, never exceeds the, the execution of results, and, and that is what's concerning in a town that is very clearly divided on this issue. I just, it's one of those situations where I don't think we win and I don't think we lose. We're not trying to silence anyone. I'm not specifically. I think everyone should have a voice. I just don't know if this is the proper platform or venue, specifically because this is not a race issue, as was alluded to earlier. You know, this is, maybe we do a separate event where there's a separate dialogue specifically to this. I would welcome that, and I think dialogue, and I think Lindsay Davis, you know, those, those open-door policies are excellent for the town and excellent for the parents and the students and for American Jews, Israeli Jews. We should all, we should all work together for that, and Arabs and Palestinians and just everyone. You know, the more we talk, the more we understand, the more tolerant we all become, and that's really the focus, I think, of everyone in this town. That's why we're here. So, my, my caution to the committee would be to, you know, have these, not just read by the deans, because obviously everyone has agendas, but why not open it up to third-party review, just so everyone can have their eyes on it? Or table this particular concept, and let's do something a little different and more, you know, more planned out so the parties can have equal time and equal face, and we could do something in that way to benefit the overall community. But otherwise, I think this unfortunately is such a heavy topic that, you know, it's not, it's not a good decision for the school to potentially have this, this topic in a, in a race concept, because it's, it's not that, you know? It's just not.
If you could wrap it up, Avi. Okay.
Thank you guys very much for your time. I appreciate you all.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Eric Burkey. Pardon me if I'm mispronouncing your name.
Hey, Eric Burke.
Burke, okay.
I'm Eric Burke. I'm a 25-year resident of Brookline with two adult children. I'm very concerned about the sharp increase in anti-Jewish and anti-Israel rhetoric and incidents around Brookline and in Brookline schools. So, of course, I'm very So of course I'm very concerned about the upcoming day of racial reform and solidarity at BHS. There appears to be a student who's being provided a platform to speak at doors under the mentorship of the same BHS educators who provided supervision for last year's anti-Jewish speaker. This student has appeared in videos spreading anti-Jew and anti-Israel tropes and smears at other events. Smears and lies about Israel committing genocide and the glorification of terrorism used against Jews and the Jew and the Israeli people. I'm very concerned about our Jewish students at this event as occurred at last year's event, having to sit through an anti-Jewish, anti-Israel speech aimed at them, their families, their people and their faith. Think about the effect this hateful rhetoric has on their developing sense of self, leaving our children feeling attacked, ostracized, humiliated and embarrassed. The Brookline schools are no place to condone these kinds of verbal attacks and smears. The Brookline schools should be a place of inclusion and learning and celebrating our differences. It should be a place where words like genocide, occupation and terrorism are studied as to their meaning and usage, not used to demonize and vilify a significant segment of our student population. And so I'm asking the Brookline School Committee to ensure that no harm is done at doors next week and to take affirmative steps to create a school environment that is safe and inclusive for all students and prevent hate and bias incidents from occurring by, one, providing concrete written guidance to all student speakers and faculty advisors in an effort to depoliticize speech. And two, by securing an external, objective, well-informed source on various forms of hate and prejudice to preemptively review all remarks to be made at doors rather than placing this burden on educators who may not be appropriately trained to identify anti-Jewish speech. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Okay, next up we have Jamila Arcilla.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. Uh, on October 20th this year, my daughter was published in The Cypress. She wrote about her hopes for the new coexisting club at BHS. One of the things she noted was, quote, "Being Palestinian in a town with a large Jewish population can be somewhat intimidating." "I don't feel threatened, however, I'm not always sure what I can and cannot say about myself, my family and my heritage, so I don't say anything." I am so proud of her for continuing in that peace and every day to talk about our family and our heritage. To be fair, it's mostly mundane aside from the violent dispossession of the Nakba and the way the current genocide is breaking her grandmother's heart in a new way each day. I know these are difficult words for some present, Nakba, genocide. But we are allowed to say them in this forum, in this town and in this country. They are in the air, in the news, and they are regrettably part of our stories as Palestinians. I would ask this committee not to forget that. My daughter is not at a point where she regularly engages in these difficult conversations out loud with her peers. She is 16 with all the emotion and insecurity of that age. However, it would seem that her initial reticence was well-founded. While I remain incensed as a parent by the absolutely unacceptable cultural limitations placed on my daughter and others in the climate to this point, this has amounted to amateurish and laughable erasure when compared to the overt attempt at censorship on display in this meeting today. At a moment, an eternity really, when Palestinians in Gaza suffer previously unthinkable atrocities, it is, is it possible that you would entertain the notion of silencing a Palestinian and Lebanese student from speaking to his peers on a day that is designed to platform precisely these voices and to empower future voices? Is your message to this student, speaker and my daughter, just don't say anything? Your suffering must be carefully vetted before it can be discussed and it will be silenced if we disagree. I hope that fair minds will prevail in this case and thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Arcilla. And next up we have Donna Perry.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Donna Perry. Many of you know me. I'm a Brookline mom of two teens, one of whom is at Brookline High. Um, I was trying to think of how to explain to the committee how I feel and, and here's what I came up with. I'm sure we all know a million variations of the light bulb joke, you know, the one that goes, how many blanks does it take to change a light bulb? Well, it feels like we're living inside of that joke, but it's not funny. So how many Jews does it take to tell PSB that something is antisemitic? So far, you've probably heard from 20 or 30 Jews. Is that enough? I don't know. Um, this is a day of racial solidarity and yet you have a large group of people all from the same minority telling you that you have made them feel like they do not belong, that their voices don't count and that their pain isn't real. But it's okay. It's just the pesky Jews who are centering their white voices on a day that's supposed to center the voices and experiences of students of color. At least that's according to one BHS educator. I guess I should reach out to that same educator to check where my son fits in. He's sixth generation Israeli, so back in the days of the Ottoman Empire. Is my American Israeli son a student of color? Or is that descriptor only allowed for Middle Eastern students who don't identify as Israeli? I actually realize it doesn't matter because doors isn't about fact checking. Um, and most people sitting in the audience at BHS during this mandatory day of racial reform have no substantive understanding of the Middle East or the history and cultures of the many, many different groups, religious, ethnic, linguistic, socio-ethnic, so ethno-religions and other subgroups in the Middle East. I'm sure the complex nuances of antisemitism will surely be caught by the keen eyes of your screeners. So this part is important. It's not just the speeches that need to be screened, but by allowing a speaker who was featured by an antisemitic group, you have already sent us a silent message. The truth of the matter is that the mandatory day of racial reform and solidarity doesn't really do any of the things that we want to pretend that it does. Because if it did, we wouldn't be here trying to figure out how to explain the pain and injustice in a way that maybe, just maybe you'll understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Next up we have Ziv Rosenbloom. Okay, looks like, uh, Mr. Rosenbloom isn't available. So next we have Abigail Baraha. Okay, Mr. Rosenbloom is, is on now. So let's, uh, let's hear from him. We can't hear you at the moment or see you. Um, you might need to unmute.
Oh, can, can you hear me?
Uh, now we can hear you, yes.
Thank you. Sorry for that. Uh, my name is Ziv Rosenbloom. I'm a parent of three kids in the public school of Brookline. Um, I came to the U.S. 20 years ago from Israel, been living in Brookline for 12 years. And today I want to talk to you about leadership and doors. And I want to start with a short story. I'm a CEO of a company in the energy efficiency space. I serve over 5,000 builders in the U.S., uh, being used on one in three new homes, making them more energy efficient. Very successful organization that was, that I was about to lose several years ago. Back then, I had, um, my, my, my leading salesperson, he was talking down to, uh, for, for a while, for, as one of my, uh, entry-level subcontractors. And I ignored that. I said, this is just words. You know, they can figure out. I'm busy. And then several months later, this person came to me and she would, she, she quits. She wanted to, wanted to leave her job. And she told me how she felt and that opened my eyes to figure out how bad it is. And I, I immediately I realized I have to do something and I set some, some guidelines of what's allowed, what's not allowed. And a few weeks later, I had to let that person go. One of the toughest decisions, uh, I had to make, you know, in my career, but also, uh, the smartest because then I realized how deep it goes. That was, that's just the tip of the iceberg. Uh, three other employees were about to leave and five of my clients were looking for some other alternatives because he was talking to the, down to them as well. I was about to lose my company. And, you know, words has meanings. And our role as leaders is to set the boundaries of what people can do. Give them vision, direction, letting them know what is allowed, right? And, and in most cases, we just did the tip of the iceberg. Now, you're also leaders. And you are the one that's setting the north star of Brookline School. And the reality is that you have a problem, right? Students from both sides are afraid to go to school, parents are concerned. And the fabric that brings us together is falling apart. And this is because, you know, you don't give them the, uh, the, the guidance and leadership to support the sense of belonging of all students. And this is your time as leaders to set up guidelines before we eat the big iceberg. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenbloom. Uh, do we have Ms. Baraha available now? Oh, okay. Okay, it seems that, uh, there's nobody else who's in the queue to speak at this point. Okay, we'll try, um, Ms. Baraha once more before we close this. Oh, uh, oh, there's Mr. Rosenbloom again. Okay, she's joining now, so.
Hi there. Uh, thanks so much for taking the time. Um, I'm in South Brookline. I have, uh, three kids. I have one who just graduated from BHS. I have another one who's at BHS. Um, my kids have loved this school. Um, I just want to bring a couple of ideas here. Uh, you know, growing up, uh, in the U.S. many years ago, we had a sense of, uh, a sort of national pride of being, uh, proud to be American and proud of, of a country that was a melting pot. And that diversity created, uh, a better, uh, a better place for everybody. Um, I do think that there has been a stark shift in the last maybe decade around a mantra that is very anti-American, um, anti, um, and, and really goes against some of the, the, the real values of, of this special place, uh, that encourages everybody to, to be themselves. Um, and unfortunately, I think there's intimidation on maybe many sides. And I do wonder whether this event has any purpose. Um, when I went to school, nobody talked about these things. You know what? We got along just fine. And I do wonder whether this is just part of the woke movement to start airing everything in, in schools and companies. And maybe this is just, maybe it's not the place. Um, because it hasn't created a melting pot. It's created a lot of tense emotion, people feeling intimidated and unsafe. And I do wonder whether that's what public school is for. I also wonder if we're really teaching students the beauty of America and the incredible path that we've taken to get to a, a country that has taken asylum seekers from every religion and from every country. Um, there is a glorious history that should be celebrated that I think gets undermined by things like, events like this. I don't think this kind of event actually glorifies what America has done for so many asylum seekers of, of every nationality and every, every religion. And I just wonder whether this, I, I wonder what the point of this event is really because I don't even know if it belongs in, uh, in a public school. I don't think anybody should feel intimidated and I do wonder if students are feeling intimidated and, and uncomfortable, whether this is serving a purpose to anybody. Um, I would also say that I think the narrative has been very corrupted. The narrative of what it means to be American, what it means to be, um, a person in this town. I think a lot of the narrative has been, um, twisted and, and manipulated, um, for other people's purposes and, and corrupting, um, the, the trope of, of what it means to be American, I think is really tragic.
All right, thank you, Ms. Baraha. Uh, are, are you finished?
I am done.
Okay.
I do wonder the purpose of this and whether, you know, we need, uh, woke-ism in public school.
All right. Thank you for the comment and that, uh, unless, okay, so it, it appears that everybody who signed up to speak and has, and is here, uh, has spoken. We have someone in the room. Oh, okay. So we, we have one speaker who's here in person. So, um, Ismail Abdul-Dayem, please go. Um, who's the other? Uh, Miriam Modricamim. Okay. Um, so you're first on the list and then, um, and then Mr. Abdul-Dayem. Yeah, please go to the podium. Um, yeah.
So I was very disturbed when, um, I saw this today. I saw the word genocide and I wondered whether the person using it is either misinformed, they don't know what the word is, or if they do know what the word is and they are lying on purpose in order to express your feelings. And that's an awful thing to do, to lie. I mean, genocide means that you want to get rid of a people, do away with them. There is a war going on in Gaza. Civilians are dying, but nobody is aiming to kill civilians. That just happened in war. Uh, you don't tell people you want to kill, get out of the way because there's a bomb coming. So when you use a word like this, then it makes me think, well, what else are you lying about? So what it comes out is a feeling that you're trying to intimidate. You're, you're saying ugly lies about somebody or about a group of people to make them feel bad. And so if this is the case, this woman or man, whoever the student is, shouldn't be allowed to speak. You're supposed to have a day of, I don't know, making people feel better about who they are, accepting all races. Well, you can't be doing that if you're telling a lie. And I, I think that this last woman who just spoke really said it very, very well. I don't think this belongs in school at all. It seems to me that we are creating hate rather than creating good feelings between, amongst students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Modricamim. Um, next up we have Ismail Abdul-Dayem.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. Um, my name is Ismail Abdul-Dayem. Uh, I have a, a son in the high school. I have a, a middle schooler. Um, I first want to take a moment, uh, to express my gratitude to you all for your decision, uh, two committees ago uh, to recognize it as a category one holiday. Thank you all for your careful deliberation. Uh, your vote shows a strong commitment to honoring the religious and cultural diversity within our community. I know this will have a positive impact on both Muslim and non-Muslim families and I pray, um, that it will foster greater understanding and respect amongst all our students and our community at large. Second, and along a similar theme, I do want to, um, speak about the importance of the day of racial reform and solidarity. And I think it is important that it be in our schools. Um, it's a day meant to challenge all of us to listen, to reflect and to learn from one another. A day that acknowledges the power of diverse voices and lived experiences within our community, especially those of our students. So it saddens me deeply to hear members of our community again seeking to censor a young student who wants to share their lived experience with their peers. And these are, these are his lived experiences. These are young members of our BHS community showing the courage to stand before their peers, to express their truth as they see it. If we respond by silencing them, what message are we sending about who deserves to be heard? What are we teaching our children about the value of empathy? And the courage it takes to speak out? And the courage it takes to set down your personal beliefs for just a moment? To really listen, to really hear someone else's point of view? In a world filled with division and conflict, we cannot afford to silence our children. Instead of avoiding discomfort, we Instead of avoiding discomfort, we must teach our children how to embrace discomfort, how to listen to different viewpoints and engage with the complex realities around them. Let's not stifle their voices in the name of protecting certain narratives. Instead, let's lift up all of our students, all of their voices, encouraging bravery, kindness, respect, and a genuine desire to learn from one another. This is what it means to challenge preconceptions and long-held beliefs. This is what doors should stand for. Let's let our children's words enter the marketplace of ideas and stand on their own merit. Teachers and parents should act as facilitators of this process, not as censors. Around this time last year, my son said to me, "Baba, we sometimes need to go through a place of discomfort to get to a place of understanding." We need to trust our kids, trust them to engage with their peers, to grapple with the difficult conversations, and to view the world through someone else's eyes, even when it's uncomfortable, especially, especially when it's uncomfortable. They will be better for it. They will be safer for it, and they will begin to craft a world that is more just, more compassionate than the one that we have now. I'm almost done. Doors wasn't always called doors. It used to be called Asking for Courage Day. Let's honor that spirit. Let us show our children that we have the courage to listen, even when it's hard. Because if we want them to be better than us, they need the opportunity to have conversations now as colleagues, as neighbors, and even better, as friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abdul-Dayem. So, Betsy, unless anyone else has appeared, is there anyone else who's in the room who had signed up to speak? All right. Victor Zilbershot, the floor is yours for three minutes.
Good evening, school committee members. My name is Victor Zilbershot. I'm a father of three children in the Brooklyn school system and a proud member of the Jewish community. The Day of Racial Reform and Solidarity is an important occasion to express diverse views and reaffirm our commitment to unity. I'm here tonight because last year, this day was in part misused to spread hate against my community. Instead of building bridges, the platform allowed divisive rhetoric to take place. While I tend to assume good intentions, I can't ignore the trend of hateful voices around me, and I feel a duty to urge you to be vigilant against these dangerous patterns. Like any bad habit, if it isn't stopped right away, it only grows worse. This year, I am concerned that if this misuse isn't addressed, it will become even more damaging. I'm here to ask you to take action to prevent that. People who promote violent rhetoric, anti-Semitism, or anti-American sentiments should not be given a stage in front of our children. My request is simple. Please ensure the Day of Racial Reform and Solidarity fulfills its true purpose. Don't let it be taken over by voices with political agendas aimed at spreading hostility rather than unity. And another note beyond what I wrote, just, you know, sitting here and listening to everything, I have to say, it's very depressing, and I'm really hopeful that we can come together. Obviously, the community is so divisive. I see the kids. I see organizations that work together. In my company, we have Arabs and Jews, and everybody is so collaborating. And I see my kids fostering friendships with their peers. And I really hope that we are not ruining it for them, and hopefully, they are, you know, we can trust them to build something better than what we are doing. I hope we'll find also the voice and the courage to speak with one another and come to common ground, because we have an opportunity to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zilbershot. We're just checking to see whether anyone in the room is still signed up to speak. Okay, it looks like we've reached the end of our speakers list, so thank you all very much. And that brings public comment to an end for tonight. Next up, new business. Would anyone like to bring forward any new business? Carolyn?
No, I don't.
Okay, so there is no new business, as far as I can see. No one remote? Okay.
I did have one.
Okay, Jesse?
I don't have to wait for the computer. I'll add a little bit. In terms of new business, I noticed that the select board had voted to move the SRO topic to us, and I was, I think that in my reading through the select board results, this was a direct expression of their responding to the overwhelming support that the building leaders gave to us when we met with them and brought up the topic of SROs. And so, I was wondering at what point we would be potentially docketing that so that it comes up to us for a, you know, robust discussion.
It's only welcome up for a robust discussion. I don't know when it would be docketed. But the last time the school committee addressed the issue, it was, there was a long runway, and there was a lot of speed work. So, I don't necessarily expect that we would have such an elaborate process, but it would not be a one-and-done. Carolyn has new businesses as well.
Of something that I've brought up before, and so I'll bring it up again, because also, and it's related to, I know we're going to talk about the calendar in executive session, but I, now I don't have my notes in front of me. I want to point out again, part of the conversation that we had at the August workshop around the calendar and challenges with the academic calendar has to do, had to do with concerns about learning and the limitations placed on learning, homework, tests, assignment, et cetera, by the various categories. So, after that and after our October meeting, I spent some time really looking through everything. And the, so we have the calendar, and linked to the calendar is the guidance. Sometimes it's called guidance. Sometimes it's called instructions. And those are the instructions around homework and assignments. And those say, the letter that I believe Dr. Gilery inherited from previous superintendents and is sent out to families and building leaders, says that the guidance is aligned with the public school's homework policy, but it's actually not. And the policy is less restrictive on learning and teaching and assignments than what's currently linked. So, be that as it may, that there are various issues to work out related to the calendar, it seems to me that that misalignment would be a simple fix. And I think from the feedback that we heard from building leaders via Dr. Gilery in August, that that would be welcome, because it would be less restrictive. So, I would love for that to be docketed for discussion sooner rather than later. That's not, I don't think that's controversial. It has nothing to do with holidays. It's simply that right now, the guidance is actually not aligned with the policy. So, I would love for us to be able to discuss correcting that.
Sure. To be clear, on my reading of the policy and the guidelines, the guidelines are consistent with the policy. They just go beyond the policy. Be that as it may, I think, you know, at the very least, we are going to need to vote the calendar itself, which we still haven't done, right? So, when that comes up, this can be part of that discussion.
Andy, can you clarify, when is that coming up? Because at the last meeting, it sounded like we had all thought it was February, and then it was moving to December.
Oh, well, there are two different, there are two different discussions here, right? There's the immediate issue of, at some point before February, we need to pass the 2526 calendar. And as I've been saying, it hasn't been clear how we should proceed on that, given the open meeting law complaint that's active. We're going to discuss that momentarily in executive session with town council. There's also the broader issue of what is our approach to the calendar in general. I think that when the 2627 calendar draft comes before us, again, early next year, that would be the time to have that discussion, sort of with a longer runway, with more preparation, in particular by staff, so that we can approach it, the whole thing, in a more principled way.
Okay, so even though we heard it might be moving up to December, it's not?
Who heard that we might be moving it up to December? Or who said that?
At our last meeting, Linus said it. Linus said that if we, he wanted to move it up to December.
The December portion, so I realized we were conflating two things. So, typically, what happens is around the December break is when I give a draft calendar for the upcoming year to the union for their review. And then, we have until, as Andy's saying, around mid-February for the committee to vote on it if the union and the district haven't necessarily agreed on it. So, I think what Andy is doing is trying to tease them out so that we're clear on what course of action that we need. So, right now, it's taking care of the 2526 calendar. And then, what we learn here, we'll be able to incorporate in the 2627. So, some of the things that Carolyn's talking about, as well as looking at how we go about identifying the days and those types of things.
All right, I think we've pushed this one to the limit of new business. All right, so unless there's a new topic under new business, I think I'll move to meet in executive session. Let's see, how do we word this? We're addressing the question, the purpose of meeting an executive session is to address the question of, so I'm just reading off of this, whether the school committee... Okay, the question is whether the school committee shall enter into executive session for the purpose of reviewing a proposed response drafted by the Office of Town Council and possibly taking remedial action regarding an open meeting law complaint received on or about October 22, 2024, and filed by Maria Kogan pursuant to purpose one, an OML exemption allowing discussion of complaints or charges brought against public officials, general laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 1, and to review and approve minutes from the July 29, 2024, and September 12, 2024, meetings pursuant to purpose seven under general laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 7. Do I have a second? Suzanne? All right, Jesse?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So, we are going into executive session and will not be returning to open session. Thanks, everyone.